I S. No kidding. Mr. Robertson, you'll need to come up here and get up under here with us. It's crazy, wow. I think you're right. Wow. Always something new. So welcome, thank you all for coming. I'll gather us into session. And. Let it get settled. We all have some new committee assignments, maybe you all have been to some of your committee meetings and maybe not yet. But if we could start tonight's meeting with a commissioner's report, Mr. Lohondo, will you take us away?
Certainly. I've attended two committee meetings since the last commission meeting. First one was October 16th, the Board of Architectural Review. During that meeting, there were ten agenda items. Three of those items after discussion were voluntarily deferred by the applicants to come back again with some revisions. And then seven certificate of appropriateness were issued to other projects. And nothing more really to report of those projects that we reviewed. At the October 18th meeting of the P C, P A C C Technical Committee, that's the Planning and Coordination Council Technical Committee. We got upgrade dates from all the city, county, and UVA participants on the various current projects and initiatives going on in their region. But then. More substantially, we had a presentation by Alice Rousher, the architect for the university, on the Fontaine Master Plan. Which is owned by the university foundation. She went through the master plan. The goal of that master plan is to test a fit of new facilities to support the UVA health system and the engineering schools. And they will replace outdated clinical and research infrastructure at the university. Fontaine was targeted because of its proximity to grounds, its easy accessibility, and the surface parking that it offers. It requires coordinated enhancements to transportation network within UVA to make that, to make it work. The existing development has 580,000 square feet, gross square feet. The master plan identified a near-term potential expansion to 1.1 million gross square feet. And in a long-term capacity of 1.4 million gross square feet. And that's my report, thank you.
Thank you. I want to remind us, please, speak in the microphone, since our secretary has since retired in our last meeting. I know that the minutes we'll need to make sure we capture this on recording, so. Mr. Sully Yates?
No report.
Ms. Eaton?
I attended a regional planning stakeholders meeting where they were gathering feedback. About the growth estimates that the regional, not only transportation, but just area plans being based on. And they were just, they mainly surveyed. Planning commissioners for our thoughts on the general direction. And got to meet some of the regional planning folks.
Fantastic.
That was the ninth.
Okay. Ms. Dowell?
Good evening. On October 25th, I attended the school board CIP or Capital Improvement Project work session. And the biggest takeaway was that we have to decide whether we're gonna renovate or rebuild our middle school. So we're trying, they're trying to figure out what is the most cost-effective way to either combine Walker and Beaufort. Or to figure out which school they're going to. And which school they're going to proceed with. We also talked about the improvements that were made and as far as school safety and security, where they've added. Any school that had direct entryway access, they've added a barrier as to where you have to reroute through the office. To then actually get access to the school. And. The renovations are coming along at Charlottesville High School. We have the new field and also the track and some other renovations coming up for the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Mr. Stolson.
Yeah, let's see. On November 7th, attended a meeting with the people working on the regional housing needs assessment. Interviewing Gary and myself about our views on development and housing needs in the greater Charlottesville area. On Thursday, the 8th, I attended a meeting of the place committee where we discussed the East High Street Streetscape project that we'll be seeing tonight. That culminated in the memo that was sent to us a few days ago. And then this morning, I attended the MPO Technical Committee. Talking about our long-range transportation plan that we saw a presentation on last month at this meeting. They've developed a new scenario, a mix of potential plans that performs much better than the projections on their other ones. And we spent about an hour talking about whether we should expand the free bridge or build a new bridge. Only to realize that there was no consensus on that, just as there wasn't before.
Love all that data, don't you?
So, the last, last six days have been pretty active. On Wednesday, Alex and I visited with the UVA Master Plan Council. And they're, they walked us through four different projects that they're working on. One was Ivy. And Ivy is really in the visioning process, so there's really not a lot to talk about with Ivy. The other is the Fontaine deal, and Jody's kind of walking through that. That is really all about bringing their research and their, their transitional research and clinics all together. The one takeaway I got from that meeting was that they are more sensitive now than ever. As relates to our low-income community that don't have automobiles and need transportation to get to the UVA facilities. And they, they made that very clear, that they're thinking about that and thinking through that. The other piece was the athletic master plan. And they're gonna do a lot of work over there by JP, JPJ and what, well, one day used to be U-Haul. But most of the work that they're doing over there is just to upgrade the facilities that are already available to the athletes, just to make, make them better. I think they may add a softball field to, to that, that's, that's the only significant thing there.
Take it out of the Colosseum.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Imploding it.
Imploding it, unbelievable.
That's pretty exciting.
The, the other piece was the Brandon Avenue Master Plan. That, that's gonna be kind of neat. They're, they're looking to make that a lot more pedestrian-friendly than it is now. And everything over there will be LED compliant. Very, really a green space area. And they're gonna put in several new buildings and build a parking lot there as well to, to support those, those new buildings. The other meeting was the Parks and Rec meeting, and we, we walked through what's happening with the CIP. And I'm actually gonna meet with, with the Parks and Rec staff leadership next week, just to go through their CIP in, in greater detail. There was an update on the athletic programs that they provide. The takeaway from that is more people from the county use our athletic facilities than, than people from the city. So something to think about as, as we look down the road. The exciting piece that they're working on, again, I talked about this last month, is a skate park. That, that is gonna, you know, as I said, she has an email about this, it's pretty much done. And we're gonna do a grand opening in December. And I really think that we're gonna be able to get Tony Hawk to be there. And you know who he is, he is the man when it comes to, to, to that sort of thing. So we think he'll be there for the grand opening. And one of the reasons we're able to do that is because a lot of people think this is gonna be one of the top three skate facilities in the nation. And as a result, a lot of folks think that this will result in a significant economic boost for our area. Bringing people in from, from the region and frankly, from all over the US. So keep your eye out for that. The, the most exciting thing that I did was yesterday. Yesterday, I joined the vice mayor in a flyover of the Ravanna River watershed. And unbelievable, just the, the views you get when you fly into 3,000 feet. And, and the views you get of the, of the waterways. And there were three takeaways that I, that I left there with. One takeaway is at Morris Creek. That is more substantial a body than I thought it was. There, there are parts of Morris Creek that are wider than parts of the Ravanna, so it is a significant waterway. The other takeaway is that a lot of the riparian buffers, the buffers between development and the river are very thin. I, I have sometimes a single tree stands between the, the development and, and the rivers. Something we need to think about as we work through our land use plan. Especially where there's major industry along Morris Creek, for example. And the other thing that I left that with is I renewed my, my desire to ask the developers who are developing near, near our waterways. Mitigate the runoff and push, push away from allowing them to use nutrient credits. Nutrient credits are very good when it comes to protecting the Chesapeake Bay, helping the Chesapeake Bay out. But it doesn't do any good for our waterways. And so just something to think about as we, as we, we deal with development that, that's gonna impact local waterways. And the developer wants to mitigate by offering nutrient credits. We should push those guys to do something to, to mitigate the runoff.
Thank you, that sounds like a very exciting trip.
I beg to disagree on nutrient credits. We are the recipient of about $1 million in statewide nutrient credits, which is not true of most locales.
Well, you've got a more global view than I do, I'm picking local.
So we don't have the university. Member here to do a university.
No, Bill wasn't able to come, but he figured that we would have a report from. Already, which we have, so that's helpful.
So we are, for me, it's also been very busy. We are in the middle of reviewing the CIP, citywide CIP. So that's a weekly meeting. And I think that's gonna come to us in December.
You all have a work session on December 18th on the CIP, and then the hearing would be January.
Okay. So. There's a lot of talk about that CIP, just for the simple fact that there's a lot of things going on in the city. And so it's an interesting time. That's, that's all I can say about that right now. But that is going on weekly. The second thing is on Jan, on November 1st, I attended my first TJ PDC meeting, which was also extremely enlightening. They, at that meeting, it was the. Financial audit of the organization, which we, was a pretty in-depth audit of the financial. Report, which they had a accountant review and they're in good standing, which is always great. We. Talked over some information about the regional housing partnership, membership. So after our housing audit and report. Members of the TJ PDC got together and decided that they needed a regional housing commission. So they're going to be doing a study based off of the study that was done for the city. To look at the inventory of housing and what is needed, much like, again, for the city. This will cover Charlottesville, Almar, Fluvanna, Green, Louisa, and Nelson. So it is regional. At that time, they were looking to add members of the community from different locations to that. And, and put together a charter for that commission, which we went over, which was interesting. That is also, you can find that on the TJ PDC website. But it does involve a lot of the members of the public. Other local stakeholders, public sector, private sector. And right now, they're just putting together members for that charter, voting members for that charter. And I think then out of the blue, we got an invite to a meeting which you all attended last Thursday morning. And I appreciate you guys doing that at short, well, Wednesday morning, maybe it was, you had like eight hours notice. So I appreciate you going to that. And filling us in on that, thank you very much. So stay tuned for more information on that regional housing partnership, RHP. And then. We got some information. From the Virginia Association Planning District Commission, Bob Koiner. And evidently, the Virginia PDCs are celebrating 50 years this year. Let's see, what else? The housing strategy was, was what was most impactful to me. And then how we could apply for potential grants. And I think that was all I had for a report. So if you have any questions on that, the next meeting for that TJ PDC is the, is December 4th, I think. So we'll hopefully hear more on that. And I'll give you, fill you guys in a little bit more on this, the voting members of this regional housing partnership. So. Ms. Creasy, would you read the NDS report, please?
All right. Well, you all have a work session scheduled for Saturday. We'll be meeting from 11 to 4 in the NDS conference room. And that's a public meeting, so anyone is invited to attend. We'll be working on the comprehensive plan. We also have a work session scheduled on the next Tuesday, which is November 20th. And that is going to be getting the draft to a place where you all are generally comfortable with it. So that staff can put it into the materials that will go to council. Council is scheduled to look at the comprehensive plan draft on December 17th. So commissioners think about who might want to come and be a part of, of that evening. That will be followed the next night by our work session on the CIP. And we have the Emmett Streetscape presentation, similar to what we've been doing with East High. Emmett Street's on its way. And then I'm sure that we'll be debriefing what happened at council the evening before. Those are the only meetings, well, those are the meetings that you all have scheduled before the end of the year. We're not scheduled to have our work session on the regular night that we have, November 27th. Guessing no one will be too terribly disappointed, since we've been meeting weekly at least for the last while. So yeah, that's what's going on.
So for our comprehensive plan, we have this coming Saturday and pretty much next Tuesday. And that's it.
That's, that's it to get you all a draft to council.
Right. And that's it before it goes to council, let me, let me rephrase that. For them to determine whether we need to focus on something else and/or start public hearings. So we've got a lot of work to do this coming Saturday, this coming Saturday. And we'll be talking about kind of the format and the structure of that as soon as we get through our public hearings this evening. So not staying late. But. Want to make sure we, we talk about that so that at 11 a.m. we hit the ground running. And stay focused and get this information that we need to pass on. Where are we meeting Saturday?
In the NDS conference room.
Okay. So. At this time, we would like to ask if there are any members of the public to come forward and speak on anything that's not on our formal agenda. The things that are on the formal agenda tonight are the East High Streetscape concept. And you'll have an opportunity at that time to speak on that. Carlton Avenue PUD, and you would have a time, some, some time at that point to speak on that. If you wanted to speak on the entrance corridor review board, Dairy Central 2, now is your time to speak on that. So if you'd like to come forward, you have three minutes for public comment. And I don't think we have anybody signed up, so is there anyone in the audience that would like to come and speak to anything not on the formal agenda? Then I will close that public section of the public comment, and we can move to our consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. The zoning, and they're all three zoning text initiations, amusement center location, site plan requirements, and mixed-use code descriptions. And these are, this would just be an initiation to move forward with reviewing tho, those code changes. And that would all come before the public comment and have a public comment process.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the items, approve the items on the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion and a second. If we could get a vote by voice acclamation, all in favor.
Aye.
Any oppose? That motion passes for the consent, the approval of consent agenda. Our next item on the agenda is the joint meeting with commission and city council. Ms. Creasy, did we get confirmation for?
We have confirmation that we have a quorum coming.
Okay.
And we still have about four minutes.
Okay, so I'm gonna adjourn us for the next five or so minutes, so that we can wait on council to join us.
So, is there, are they selling tickets to CIP while the floor?
Did you get my?
Raise the money for some of the people.
I told her.
Can we tell the chair?
I told the chair. The chair.
So for our comprehensive plan, we have this coming Saturday and pretty much next Tuesday.
That's, that's it to get you all a draft to council.
Right. And that's it before it goes to council. Let me, let me rephrase that. For them to determine whether we need to focus on something else and/or start public hearings. So we've got a lot of work to do this coming Saturday, this coming Saturday, and we'll be talking about kind of the format and the structure of that as soon as we get through our public hearings this evening. So not staying late, but want to make sure we, we talk about that so that at 11:00 AM we hit the ground running and stay focused and get this information that we need to pass on. Yeah, where are we meeting Saturday?
In the conference room.
Okay. So. At this time, we would like to ask if there are any members of the public to come forward and speak on anything that's not on our formal agenda. The things that are on the formal agenda tonight are the East High Streetscape concept, and you'll have an opportunity at that time to speak on that. Carlton Avenue PUD, and you would have a time, some time at that point to speak on that. If you wanted to speak on the entrance corridor review board, Derry Central 2, now is your time to speak on that. So if you'd like to come forward, you have three minutes for public comment. And I don't think we have anybody signed up, so is there anyone in the audience that would like to come and speak to anything not on the formal agenda? Then I will close that public section of the public comment, and we can move to our consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda, the zoning, and they're all three, zoning, text initiations, amusement center location, site plan requirements, and mixed use code descriptions. And these are, this would just be initiation to move forward with reviewing those code changes, and that would all come before the public comment and have a public comment process.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the items, approve the items on the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion and a second. If we could get a vote by voice acclamation, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? That motion passes for the consent, the approval of consent agenda. Our next item on the agenda is the joint meeting with commission and city council. Ms. Creasy, did we get confirmation for?
We have confirmation that we have a quorum coming.
Okay.
And we still have about four minutes.
Okay, so I'm going to adjourn us for the next five or so minutes, so that we can wait on council to join us.
So, is there, are they selling tickets to CIP while the floor?
Did you get my?
Raise the money for some of the people.
I told her.
Can we tell the chair?
I told the chair. The chair.
So I will call us back into session, and then I will ask our mayor to call in council into session.
I'll call us into session.
That's fine, thank you. And then we will begin with our first public hearing. CPA 18-00001, East High Streetscape Concept, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 15.2-2232 and City Code Section 34-28, the Planning Commission will review the proposed East High Streetscape Concept located on Market Street from 7th Street to 9th Street, north on 9th Street to East High Street, and from East High Street to 10th Street, to determine if the general location, character, and extent of the proposed improvements are substantially in accord with the city's adopted comprehensive plan or part thereof. Following the joint public hearing, the Planning Commission shall communicate its findings to the city, Charlottesville City Council, with written reasons for its approval or disapproval. The conceptual design of the proposed improvements may be examined at the Department of Neighborhood Development Services. Mr., I see. Who is there doing our report? Calling Mr. Affley, but he's not here. So if you'd like to come forward and give us your report?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Brian Peters. Good to see many of you again. I worked with Kimble Horn tonight, representing Neighborhood Development Services, working for them on the design of the East High Streetscape project. I hope I have my presentation. I have a fun drive if I need it.
So at this time, if any commissioners would like to go down so that we can see this presentation, it's a little bit different than our work session, right?
Yes, it is. There are a couple of updates.
Great.
And I'll point those out. You've already got a sneak peek from Wes.
So we'll start just giving you an update on where we are in the process in the project overview, as well as the schedule. The East High Streetscape project was generated through the SmartScale process, which many of you are probably familiar with. This is a VDOT prioritization process that began first in 2016. This was funded through the first round. It's one of several projects the city successfully got funded through SmartScale. The biggest takeaway from being a SmartScale project is that the budget, the project limits, the scope, and the schedule are pretty much fixed upon the time that the funds are awarded. The city was awarded $5.59 million through SmartScale. Do want to note that that does not include the undergrounding of franchise overhead utilities such as Dominion Power and Verizon and CenturyLink and other folks that might be above ground. That money is essentially a betterment. The federal government doesn't pay for betterments to private utilities. So if the city wishes to underground those utilities, they have to front the difference. In your CIP review, you'll note that the city is requesting funds to cover the balance of the estimate for the undergrounding, approximately two-ish million dollars on this particular project, as well as several other streetscape jobs. The scope of the project is funded through SmartScale, was to widen sidewalks, to add bike lanes, to install landscaping, to make ADA improvements, as well as wayfinding, signal upgrades, and transit improvements. In general, also, as we mentioned, to underground utilities. The project runs down East Market Street, so in the lower, lower right, if you're sitting in the audience, up there, you'll see that the project limits are shown in green. That runs down Market Street, beginning pretty much just outside the front door to City Hall. At the signal at 7th Street, runs to the intersection at 9th. The yellow you see there running off to the left are the limits of the Belmont Bridge Replacement Project, which I'm sure we're all very familiar with. What you want to take away from this graphic is the Belmont Project and the East High Streetscape job, project just on 9th or Avon, all the way up from the Belmont, the Belmont side to the 10th and Locust side at CFA, you're going to come away with about a half mile of enhanced pedestrian bicycle and landscape space that'll be a transformative improvement for the entryway to downtown. Where are we in the schedule? We started about a year ago, earlier this year at the beginning of 18. We are, we have been through a engagement phase, and I'm going to give you the key takeaways from. Your staff report has even more details, as well as the presentation that we gave at your work session last month on each individual of those data points that you see up there. And you can see we are on the far right there at Boards and Commissions' presentation. We would look for your determination on being compliant to the comp plan tonight, assuming that you concur on that. We'd then go to council in December. The council would endorse the concept, and then we'd begin detailed design, and we'd be back before council, probably by mid-year in 19, to get a design approval on the actual details of the design, so we can begin right-of-way in construction. Right-of-way would be estimated to take about a year, so we'd be beginning the project in about 2020 for construction. Want to give you one slide, just on the brief takeaways from the engagement. This project has benefited from the visibility of the Belmont Bridge project, but also being next to the Martha Jefferson, Little High, and several other neighborhoods. We had very good involvement from the neighborhood associations, was actually at one of the neighborhood's picnics in the spring to be able to answer questions and give information, but we've received a lot of input. We've received roughly 1,000 touchpoints. Those are our interactions with discreet individuals. We had about 17,500 touchpoints or data points. That basically means if you filled out something on MetreQuest, or you gave us a comment card, or we gave you a survey, and we got that back, we got 17,000 individual data points from folks engaged. We had 500-plus written comments. Again, similar to the Belmont Bridge job, we used an interactive online platform to do online outreach through the internet. We received over 500 responses through MetreQuest through that. Most of those written comments you see as well came through MetreQuest as well. And again, I'll share that the city and the constituents and the citizens should really be patting on the back for engaging through MetreQuest. It's a very effective tool. We'll use MetreQuest on planning projects across the country as a consultant firm at Kimble Horn. We'll leave a MetreQuest survey open for a year. We're sometimes hard-pressed to get seven or 800 comments, or folks to interact with us, so we got 500 on this one, I believe, about 800 and some on Belmont. Some key takeaways from all of that data that we were able to accumulate, basically is it would be like what you would hope to see on a Streetscape project, where you're talking multimodal. We saw pedestrian facilities and bicycle and anything other than the car is extremely high priority. Folks expressed a desire to have a safe and walkable street. The street today, if you go outside and take a left down 9th Street, is far from being comfortable to a pedestrian. Unsafe or ugly, or would be the key words, I think, that would be used to describe the street environment in its current state, and certainly have an opportunity to improve that. And then the last big key takeaway that was consistent from both our steering committee, as well as folks who interacted with us through online, as well as in-person engagement, would be to utilize design features and proposed amenities to enhance the environment for all users. Again and again, it came up that this route we're talking about really is the entryway to access the downtown mall, and is really a unique opportunity to kind of transform that environment. This is the conceptual design, very similar to the one that we presented to you about a month ago in your work session. I do want to point out a couple of big takeaways, and then a few refinements that have occurred based on ongoing engagement for you to be considered tonight. First, you can see the project does start at the signal just outside City Hall at 7th Street and Market Street. We do have a little bit of green that we're able to introduce to Market Street. We're not moving curbs. The scope did not envision altering the curb lines on Market Street. That's primarily a budget-driven constraint. You move the curb, you have to deal with the stormwater. If you deal with the stormwater, then you have to deal with the utilities, and the cost kind of unfolds quickly on itself. But we are able to reallocate the asphalt that exists curb to curb, and you will have a bike lane from 7th Street at the signal all the way to the intersection at 9th. We then take the left going up 9th today. 9th Street is essentially a four-lane road, though I will point out that the middle lane, the inside lanes in the southbound and northbound directions essentially act as de facto turn lanes, because on going south, even if you go across the existing Belmont Bridge, there's only one lane in and one lane out, and going out towards Pantops on the right of the screen, same thing actually, starting at East High, there's only one lane in each direction. So we're going to take away that left turn lane in a terminology that we as transportation engineers call a redway diet, to basically repurpose some asphalt for pedestrian and bicycle spaces. What you see depicted between Market Street and East High would be a four-and-a-half-foot green space and a six-foot wide sidewalk, as well as a six-and-a-half-foot bike lane in each direction. You'll note there are three lanes in Market Street. That'll be kind of a reversible left turn lane if you're coming southbound from High Street, and want to turn left onto Market, will open up somewhere between Jefferson and Market, Market Street, a left turn lane for you southbound, and then similarly going the other direction, northbound, you'll have a left turn lane that would open up near Jefferson, primarily not for Jefferson, but for the East High intersection there at the signal, kind of near Tarleton Oaks. You will notice the ongoing development project at Tarleton Oaks, that is their current site plan. We do have a unique opportunity, after meeting with them about a couple of weeks ago, in that corner there, you'll notice the greenery in front of their door at the northwest corner of East High and 9th Street, kind of where that bend around to the right is, that's going to create some public space. Today, we have a right turn lane there that is not in the design. Right turn lanes typically take up valuable space. We'd like to use, they increase the pedestrian crossing distance, and they don't do things from an urban design standpoint that we'd like. from basically the existing curb line, back out towards where those trees are. And we're actively working on concepts that would be brought to the public in later parts of the design phase, for what that plaza area could be, so we can have a little pocket plaza right there on the corner, to kind of open up the entryway to downtown. As we go around the bend there, we do narrow down a bit. We lose the landscaping space on the east side, or the right side of the street, going towards Pantops. We are able to incorporate some new trees on the west side, the left side, in front of CFA that you see. And we still have a six- or a five-foot-wide sidewalk. We essentially have a two-lane or three-lane section in each way. And then, we approach the end of our project on the right. We redo the signal, and redo the approach, as well as address that really long pedestrian crossing that exists in the bottom right of the screen, on the southern side of the Locust and Tenth intersection. These are the typical sections. You can see, they're essentially the same sections we talked to you through at your work session. I will point out, you'll see on the left side of the screen, the typicals for Market Street. And on the right, you will see the typicals for East High and Ninth. Those on the right are the same. The ones on Market, as you'll notice now, show a bike lane, pretty much from Seventh to the intersection at Ninth, and that is done purely by restriping and reallocating the asphalt. So, wrapping up my presentation, the question before you tonight is, does the design that is currently presented, does it represent, and does it comply with the transportation parts of the comp plan? In summary, the existing condition of Ninth Street has an inconsistent sidewalk width that is extremely narrow. There are no on-street bike facilities on Ninth Street. There are, in places, some bike-shared lane markings on Market Street. Multiple driveway cuts create a lot of vehicular conflict points, including intersections. Roadway widths are fairly not consistent, and if consistent, don't meet urban conditions or streets that work, i.e. they're too wide. And then, we talked about the right-hand turn lane there. Proposed conditions, the sidewalk will typically be six feet. Some constrained locations will be five, but for the most part, we get a much wider sidewalk. We do implement a few access management principles that we talked about in our work session, and also tested with the public in the open house in August. We make ADA improvements throughout the quarter. Today, there are minimal ADA improvements. We do realign Lexington Avenue, which, if you'd seen our board in April at the Streetscape Summit, you would have seen nothing but red on top of the Lexington intersection as a weak space, identifying to us something that we'd already heard, but confirming that that intersection is extremely challenging, not just for pedestrians, but also for any use vehicular or bicycle. And then, we do reduce crossing distances at intersections fairly drastically. So, this is a summary. I won't read through every one, but in essence, we increase the safety. We increase pedestrian accommodations. We add bicycle accommodations. We create safe and convenient pedestrian connections within the half-mile of commercial and employment centers, obviously with the downtown mall, and the area at Court Square. We provide design features for roadways, such as street trees and street buffers. We explore and implement safe, conveniently, visually attractive features. We'll be using the same street furniture I mentioned, as on the Belmont Bridge job, that has been approved by the BAR. We continue to include bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, and we consistently apply ADA standards throughout the corridor, making our route to the major part of downtown accessible and pedestrian-friendly. We also meet many urban design goals. Summary, we've had a significant amount of public comment and interaction with folks from neighborhoods, with the city at large, with stakeholders. And we expect that to continue throughout the refinement of the design. The project meets ASHTO, where applicable VDOT standards, City of Charlottesville design standards, as well as we've used and implemented NACTO standards, which are the National Association of City Transportation Officials. That's not a binding guide for us, but that guide is much more city-friendly, from an urban standpoint, on the transportation side. We've upgraded pedestrian and bicycle facilities, like I mentioned, with the Belmont project. If you put the two together, you end up with over a half-mile of contiguous enhanced pedestrian and bicycle space from the Belmont neighborhood, all the way up to CFA at Tenth and Locust. We moved the right-turn lane on High Street. Gives us an opportunity to open up public space. Also, it labels us to look at relocating the cat stop that's currently in front of CFA to that location, which is a location, talking with cat, would make sense, based on the ridership data they have. We're still looking at that, working into that, but with the right-turn lane gone, that's now a possibility on the table. We consolidate access points and driveways, minimizing conflict points. The one biggest way you do increase transportation safety is lower traffic speeds, and then also reduce the number of conflict points. We do that through several access management concepts that were shown and tested with the public at the open house. And we've had extensive public involvement to arrive at a preferred design. So, with that, I'll conclude my part of the presentation, and certainly in your discussion. If there's any questions that I can provide an answer to, I'd be happy to.
Thank you for that presentation. Do commissioners have any questions before we move to public comment?
Just a couple of questions. The undergrounding, is this design dependent on city funds becoming available for undergrounding, or can this go either way?
So, it can go either way. We would move the utilities that conflict with the project's design, whether that be from an ADA standpoint, or a design standpoint, i.e. like in the middle of the sidewalk, or in the middle of the travel lane, or the bike lane. We would move them overhead to overhead, and that cost is essentially zero dollar to the city, based on the agreement they have with the franchise companies. That's true on all their projects. The undergrounding, though, would open up a lot of different things. If we did not incur funds to fund the entire undergrounding, then the plant species selection for the trees, where the side of the overhead utilities would be impacted, and we'd have to go with shorter trees.
Second question. You mentioned there's quite a few buses that go through here. Do you look at bus priority, for example, at signals?
So, we've had good discussion with the city traffic engineer on coordination, timing, and transit priority. That's not something that's in the scope of this job, but it certainly would be something that Brennan has an eye on. Once Belmont's complete, and this project's complete, we can design a signal that could incorporate that as a separate project leader.
Brian, if the utilities are above ground, does that impact the sidewalk at all, or is it mostly, or is the burden mostly on the planting strips?
It would mostly be on the planting strip. Certainly, when you get into the design of overhead utilities, angles, and bends, and guy wires, and those type of things, becomes more of a concern than if there were a duck bank underground. I can't say there won't be an area where we'd have to narrow the sidewalk because of a utility pole, because we haven't gotten to that detail yet. Certainly, we would open up landscaping possibilities, and the pedestrian environment would be better with the undergrounding. Now, undergrounding comes, not only do we have the cost of the undergrounding betterment that is in the CIP request, we also have to consider that that affects how we build the job. It also complicates the dealings with the contractor and our risk discussion, and it also means we may have to move some more utilities than if we didn't put a duck bank in the ground, right? The duck bank doesn't, unfortunately, magically appear. We have to find a way to be able to build it.
But there is a qualitative difference between above-ground and below-ground. Thank you.
One more. Can you address the comments of the PLACE committee? There was a nine-point memo.
Yeah, we were aware of those comments. They were comments, in many cases, we've heard before, starting with their last particular comment, and dealing with the interactions and the public comment for the design of the public spaces, such as in front of the Carlton Oaks development. Just because we're here before you, and ideally before council in December, doesn't mean that our engagement ends. Our engagement will continue. We would be making presentations to all of the commissions, again, with our design that we take in the spring back to the public, and then ultimately, that would come back before a public hearing, before council, for design approval, probably in the mid-year with that. There are other comments, I think, were really more suggestions. I don't have that email printed with me, but I know one of them was the benefits of having the buffer between the vehicles and the pedestrian, right? From a air pollution standpoint, certainly, the more landscaping you have, the better off your air quality gets. The city certainly, I think, would have a qualitative benefit from expending the funds on the CIP request to underground utilities. It is in Kimley Horn's scope to give kind of an outline to NDS on anything we know of, or see with the zoning in the area, if there's something with the Streetscape that should be evaluated and looked at, that's not part of the Streetscape project as a whole. One of my deliverable items to NDS would be things that we would suggest be evaluated and considered, so that's already, number two, would be done. Certainly, design compatibility with work of the project of Belmont Bridge. If the two projects overlap, or become one construction project, they're existing at the same time. I have no choice but to plan for that. We're going to do that one as well. We will be using some green stormwater management techniques. We're already investigating some of those, whether that be a solvicel, or biofilter, or some type of green innovative measure. We're not to the point quite yet to know exactly which one we're going to do. But consistent with the discussion I heard in your reports, we understand that nutrient credits aren't going to be our ideal source of that, and we want to get as much quality out of the footprint of the design that we have. Let's see, does it address everything? And then, yeah, they asked about the use of a mounted median. So, the median goes back to the presentation. There's a transitional area near High Street, where there's some hatched-out space in the concept drawing. We certainly want to look in, and are looking into, ways to make that hatchable space, not just be pavement marking. Perhaps make it be flush concrete. We did look at a raised median concept through the design, but the fire access code requires 20 feet face-to-face for the fire trucks of a curb, so we can't have a true median in that area. But certainly, we're evaluating options to add some type of color flare, or identifying feature to the roadway that we can use for that space.
So, just to remind everyone, we have had members of our commission on the Streetscape committee for a while, even though they've rotated, much like our commission has rotated for a little bit. But it's, my understanding, also, PLACE had a member of their PLACE task force on that committee as well. So, they were a part of this process, just as we are, or were. So, that being said, the next steps of this process, so while this particular vote tonight is to move that this is, or not, is not, in, yes, in compliance with the comp plan, the 2013 comp plan, not the one we're hashing out, so to speak, but it is in line with the 2013 comp plan. It is not a final design vote for this evening. Mr. Stoltenberg, did you have another question? Sure. Counsel, do you have any questions? If that's the case, then I will open public comment. Now's your time to speak on the East High Streetscape concept. And this is not the final design. This is just whether it's in compliance with the 2013 comprehensive plan. But please come forward. You have three minutes to have your voice heard. And I don't have anyone signed up, but if anyone would like to come forward, please do so at this time. Mr. Emery, you'd disappoint me if you didn't.
Chair Green, oh, Plank Commissioners, I've really enjoyed the-
Could you just state your name for me?
Oh, my name is Bill Emery. I live on East Market Street, 1604 East Market. I really think they've done a great job in involving the public through it on this, with informational materials and the 17,000 data points. And I just wanted to selfishly reenunciate one of my data points I keep on trying to get in here, which is, you know, this is wonderful. It needs to be done, but East High really gets more hazardous for pedestrians. And I guess this is more a point for the Plank Commission than it is for this project, but East High really gets more hazardous as you go north, towards the Free Bridge, where the sidewalk, particularly on the northeastern side of it, disappears, once you get down that sort of riverfront area. And hopefully, the improvements that we're making up near our city center will someday extend towards the edges of our city.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please step forward. Tonight, we are missing our secretary, who's taking our minutes. So, if you could please make sure you speak in the microphone, so that we can get this on recorder, so that we will be able to get those minutes.
Mark Cabot, 400 Altimont Street. Just a point of clarification. I'm just wondering where the right-hand turn that they're talking about taking out on High Street is located at?
Sure. Please step forward.
The existing right-turn lane, southbound, in front of the Carlton Oaks gas station, would be the one that would come out. So, there'd just be one lane on that approach, southbound.
Again, I'd like to say, this plan is in concept only, in that the final design is still to be completed. But we're close. So, please make sure you, if you have any other comments, are those, is that comment section still up on the website, so other comments can be made? Okay. So, you can go to East High Street. I think you can get there through the City of Charlottesville. So, if you've got any comments on what you saw tonight, please do so. You can still submit your comments. And I'm sure there's still going to be public comment for this final design coming forward. Is there any other people that would like to speak to this concept? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at this time, and we will have discussion and/or a motion.
Just for clarification, we're only taking the right-hand turn lane out. You will still be able to turn right, correct?
At the East High signal, that is correct.
And I thought so, just in case anybody at home is wondering. I just wanted to make sure we were clear. Thank you.
To follow up on that, is it right that the only turn that you can make now, that you won't be able to make, is the left turn out of Lexington onto High Street eastbound?
There are two locations that had an access change. One is the situation you speak to. So, in the existing condition today, you can make lefts into and out of, and rights into and rights out of, at Lexington and East High, just past Carlton Oaks. The concept as proposed right now would be what's called three-quarter access. That means you could go left in, northbound on East High, into Lexington. You can make a right out of Lexington, or you could make a right in. The only movement that would not be allowed would be the left out. Interestingly to note, that left out is extremely low. In a 14-hour period, the number is less than 50 vehicles in that 14-hour period that make that. That basically means folks that want to go north onto High Street are doing that via other roadways currently in the existing condition. On the other side of the street, just past that intersection, there's the Nine-and-a-Half Street intersection. That's proposed to be a right-in, right-out. There are little-to-no lefts in a 14-hour period into or out of that street, primarily because of the Little High neighborhood, folks are accessing via the signal at High, via Jefferson, or coming in off Locust and Tenth. Thanks.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, although I lost it all of a sudden. Ah, I move that the proposed East High Streetscape project concept, located on East Market Street, between Seventh Street and Ninth Street, and on Ninth Street, East High Street, between East Market Street and Locust Avenue, Tenth Street in the City of Charlottesville, general character, location, and extent of the proposed improvements are substantially in accord with the city's adopted 2013 comprehensive plan, or part thereof.
I'd like to second that motion.
Move a motion in a second. In pre-meeting, we had a discussion, or there was some question about the resolution that's included. Should we take a sec-
If the motion could reference the resolution, then you should be fine.
And I accept that amendment to the motion.
So, the motion would then-
So, the motion includes the resolution in our packet. How'd I do?
That's fantastic.
Ah, thanks.
Could you second that?
I'd like to second.
Okay. Second, are we in good legal standing now? Ms. Roberson?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay. Ms. Krissy, would you call? Roll.
Mr. LaHondro?
Aye.
Mr. Solley Yates?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you all for your hard work and your community engagement on this project, and we look forward to seeing that final design. Next on our agenda is ZM 18-0002, 1335, and 1337 Carlton Avenue, otherwise known as Carlton Views PUD. Hydro Falls LLC, Carlton Views 1 LLC, Carlton Views 2 LLC, and ADC 4 Seaville LLC, landowners, have submitted an application pursuant to City Code 34-490. have submitted an application pursuant to City Code 34-490, and all seeking a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district classifications of the following four parcels of land. 1335 Carlton Avenue, tax map 56 parcel 430, 1337 Carlton Avenue, tax map 56 parcel 431, tax map 56 parcel 432, and tax map 56 parcel 433, together now known as the subject property. The subject property has frontage on Carlton Avenue and apparent frontage on Franklin Street, and are further identified on the city real property tax map 56 parcel 430, 431, 432, and 433. The entire development contains approximately 4.855 acres, or 211,483 square feet. The application proposes to change the zoning classification of the subject property from MI industrial to PUD planned unit development, subject to proffered development conditions. The proffered development conditions include, one, affordable housing, providing affordable and accessible units for no less than 20 years in the following ratios, at least 30% of all dwelling units within the PUD will be affordable, units for residents earning under 60% AMI, at least 15% of all affordable units will be affordable, units for residents earning under 40% AMI. The required affordable units, and for all other dwelling units within the development, the landowners will offer them for occupancy as affordable dwelling units. But if no grant funds, financing, or subsidy is available to support occupancy as an affordable unit, the unit may be rented at market rates. The landowner shall provide documentation that they actively sought to establish each dwelling unit as an affordable unit prior to offering it for occupancy at market rate unit. Two, building design elements, minimum of 15% of all required affordable units will be designed to meet UFAS guidelines for accessibility, and minimum 30% of all required affordable units designed to meet VHDA guidelines for universal design, entrance feature on all building facades, frontage on Carlton Avenue. Three, maximum height of buildings shall not exceed 65 feet. Four, parking, no additional parking over required city minimums will be considered onsite unless required to obtain grants for financing to establish affordable dwellings. Five, outdoor lighting, full cutoff lighting. Six, bus stop or sheltered if requested by CAT. Seven, environmental site design, retaining tree canopy on east side of property adjacent to Franklin Street and pedestrian linkages between buildings, open space, and the neighborhood. The PUD development plan for this proposed development includes the following key components: approximate location of existing buildings and building envelope for future buildings, a phasing sequence of the development, Phase 1, the Pace Center, completed; Phase 2, Carlton Views Apartments, completed; Phase 3, Carlton Views 2 Apartments; Phase 4, Carlton Views 3 Apartments. According to the PUD development plan, the total proposed density of the projects, all phases, will not exceed 32 dwelling units per acre for a total of 154 dwelling units. The PU development plan contains details required by City Code, including a use matrix for each phase, setback slash yard requirements for each phase, parking calculations for residential uses, open space, landscaping, architectural elements, and signage. The city's comprehensive plan and land use map calls for the area to be used as developed for business and technology uses. The comprehensive plan contains no residential density range for this subject property. Phew. Thanks for that. Mr. Affley, would you please provide us your report, if there's anything left after that?
Certainly, if you want to take a break, I'll, I'll take it from here, but I have several pages, too, so. Commissioners, tonight, you're reviewing an application to rezone the four parcels near the intersection of Carlton Avenue and Franklin Street from the existing MI to planned unit development. The rezoning request is part of a larger development plan that started back in 2012. The first phase of the development was the completion of the Byright Blue Ridge Pace Center located at 1335 Carlton Avenue. Completed in the summer of 2014, the Pace Center Program of All-Inclusive Care for Elderly offers health care and health-related services designed to keep individuals living in their homes and communities for as long as possible. The center is run as a partnership between Riverside Health Systems, the University of Virginia Medical Center, and the Jefferson Area Board for Aging, and serving seniors who live in Charlottesville and the surrounding communities. Services offered by the Pace include medical care, nursing, physical therapy, occupational therapy, nutritional services, medical social work services, and home health care. Over the last four years, Pace is, the Pace Center has provided a much-needed service to the community. In 2013, Phase 2 was started in order to create the residential component of the development. In May of that year, City Council passed a special use permit allowing a maximum residential density of 21 dwelling units per acre for MI zone parcels. This laid the groundwork for a 54-unit apartment at 1337 Carlton Avenue, known as Carlton View Apartments. In July 2015, the final site plan for Carlton View Apartments was approved, and construction, was completed in early 2017. At the time of this public hearing, all 54 units are rented out to residents making under 60% AMI. Phase 3 of the development started in the summer of 2017, and a preliminary site plan for 48-unit apartment building, known as Carlton Views 2, was approved by the Planning Commission on January 10, 2018. In early 2018, City Council awarded the developer $1.4 million for the acquisition of the site for affordable units. Once completed, all 48 units will be rented out to residents making under 80% AMI. Currently, the final site plan for Carlton View 2 is approved, but waiting the posting of bonds before construction begins. At the completion of Phase 3, which is the Carlton View 2, the development will have exhausted all the allowable density under the SUP. As the zoning ordinance only allows a maximum of 25 dwelling units per acre in the MI district, the developer needs to rezone all four parcels to increase density if they want a residential building for Phase 4. The developer does not have the option to, of only rezoning the last remaining parcels, as that would remove acreage from the existing parcels, making them non-conforming. In order to fulfill Phase 4 of the development, the applicant is pursuing a rezoning of all four PUD, all four parcels to PUD. The MI district was established to allow areas for light industrial uses that have a minimum of environmental pollution in the form of traffic noise, odor, smokes, fumes, fire, and explosive hazards and vibrations. Most uses allowed within the zoning districts are commercial and industrial by nature, with limited residential uses allowed. The 2013 comprehensive plan land use map indicates the subject property remain business and technology. Business and technology is described as properties that would permit small-scale office that catered to startup business and technological development, as well as commercial activities that do not generate the amount of traffic that can be found in more customer-oriented commercial areas. The applicant is requesting the rezoning of the subject properties to planning development to accommodate a high-density development, than the, higher-density development than the current 21 dwelling units per acres would allow by the SUP. The 2013 comprehensive plan does not designate areas that would neatly conform to a PUD-type development, as they are special zoning districts. The closest land use description from the 2013 plan would be mixed use. Mixed use in the 2013 land use plan is described as areas intended to be zoned where the city encourages development of moderate or high intensity, and where large variety of uses will be permitted, including many commercial uses, residential uses, and some limited research and manufacturing where appropriate. According to the development plan use matrix, permitted uses within the PUD would be consistent with most of the MI uses, with some exclusions and additions. All of the non-residential industrial uses have been removed as allowable uses, such as construction, storage, yard, kennel, and self-storage companies. The main use proposed in the development plan are multifamily and non-residential. The applicant indicates that the total allowable unit count for the development to be 154, and a total non-residential build-out of 50,000 square feet. Currently, the site is utilizing 20,000 square feet for the Pace Center and 102 residential units. This leaves a total of 30,000 square feet of non-residential and 52 residential units remaining for development. Residential units could be spread throughout the site, but the non-residential uses would be limited to Phase 1, 30,000 square feet, Phase 2, 7,500 square feet, Phase 3, 5,000 square feet, and Phase 4, 7,500 square feet maximum. The use matrix provided in the development plan indicates non-residential uses as commercial, retail, and general. Although the PUD use matrix and the MI use matrix correspond in many areas relating to a lot of the commercial and residential uses, they do differ in a few ways. The PUD use matrix removes all industrial uses currently allowed in the MI district. With residential aspects of the site, this is a reasonable alteration to make, but one planning commission could consider. The city has limited industrial areas, and a rezoning this size would remove close to five acres of potential industrial development. Residential treatments facility, bank, financial institution, and private clubs are uses within the PUD use matrix that are not permitted in the MI district. Planning commissions should also give some thought to those uses. Should the rezoning be approved, the overall density for the site will increase from the SUP maximum 21 DUA to a maximum of 32 DUA. Under the future land use map definition, this density is considered high-density residential. It should be noted that regardless of the rezoning, the subject properties are already high-density residential based on the 21 DUA and the type of housing that exist on sites, apartments. In May 2000, on May 8, 2018, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this rezoning. At that meeting, the commission voiced concerns related to, one, the amount of configuration of open space, two, lack of innovation with building location and design, three, pedestrian connectivity within the development, four, amenities within the development that could benefit the surrounding neighborhood, five, transit access. The proposed, the proposal before you tonight is substantially the same as the one reviewed on May 8, with the following changes: An updated proffer statement that is reformatted for better enforcement. Additional proffer language that encourages the development contain 100% affordable units. The open space calculation change from .76 acres to 1.31 acres, and the internal pedestrian connection are now highlighted on the development plan. With that, I'll open it to questions from Planning Commissioner and City Council.
Can you repeat that?
Let me start, okay.
So now, if we could limit our, just, just time to questions for Mr. Affley, then we will hear from the applicant. And you can ask questions at that time of the applicant. So are there any questions from, for Mr. Affley? We did have some pre-meeting on this where we asked questions, because we, we have several new commissioners that were not here in May, that related to that May meeting, just for full disclosure on that.
I have a question. You mentioned that the city has a limited amount of light industrial, and what percentage would this project represent of the city's?
I don't have a percentage to offer, but there's this corridor along, Harris Street is another corridor of some industrial, kind of where southern states and allied concrete are located. I don't have a map in front of me, but we just, we have limited areas that are-
River Road?
Yeah, thank you. River Road is the other kind of industrial area.
And then, once, if this were changed, once changed, it can't really revert back to the light industry?
I mean, you always can, it's just very hard. Once you lose industrial to residential and commercial, it is hard to go back to industrial.
And just for transparency, I only asked it in a pre-meeting as well, and it was already answered, but I'm gonna just ask it again, as to why they decided to do the PUD now as opposed to, prior to the beginning of the project.
And so, I can't, I'll let the applicant maybe speak to that. If you look on, starting on page eight of the staff report, it kind of just breaks down when these steps happened. And I just, Commissioner, I think I'll just leave that to the applicant to answer why they pursued an SUP as opposed to a PUD at the time.
Thank you.
And I see on page 17 of the PUD application, that they note that the number of bedrooms in any residential building shall not exceed three bedrooms, but that is not proffered. Is that intended to be a commitment, or just an intent? And is that the purpose of that, to mitigate certain impacts?
What page was that again?
17 of the application, 98 in the packet, but.
When you say "application," are you talking about their narrative?
Yeah.
This?
Yeah, that.
So this, this is proffered. This is part of their proffered development.
Okay. And were there impacts that were, that was specifically meant to address, that someone expressed concerns about, or that staff thought?
That, I mean, it was just the, in the proposal put forward, it stayed in line with their Carlton View 1 and Carlton View 2's layout.
Okay.
If we could have the applicant, please come forward. You have 10 minutes to give us your presentation, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kevin Wood. I represent the owners, all four owners here, of Carlton Views. I'm here with Scott Collins of Collins Engineering, who prepared the PUD application. We will speak tonight to the four major concerns that we felt came out of the first hearing, and the reason for the referral to this hearing. The first is clarification of affordability. The second is connectivity across the site. The third being adequate open space. And the fourth being an innovation in design. As Matt said, we, we've made clarifications to this, but not substantial changes. This project has always been about providing more affordable housing. And in order for this project to be financially feasible, and to earn tax credits at VHDA, we need to increase the density in order to provide an additional multifamily building. And of course, we backed into this PUD after we finished three of the first phases, and tried to go for additional density. I'd always assumed that we would apply for R3 on parcel D, but because of making the other parcels non-conforming, we ended up having to go for a PUD rezoning in order to get the additional density and create the affordable housing. The one thing we did expand upon is a new proffer statement. We worked with the council's office to try to proffer as much affordability on this site as we possibly could. Of course, that is contingent upon getting a tax credit allocation in the upcoming round at VHDA. Carlton 1 was successful. Based on that success, we were able to get credits for Carlton 2, and we are hopeful that we will be able to earn credits in the 2019 round that's upcoming in March. Let me go over just a little history here in, in- It was the old HD Farren site, a very difficult-to-develop site that was split up in four different parcels. The corner here on the north, sorry, southwest side is A. The Pace Center is in the center where the old HD Farren building was. Carlton Views is to the east of that, Carlton Views One, and then we have an open parcel, which is parcel D, and is really the reason for us coming for you to try to get a PUD rezoning. As we go on, this was the original special use permit application plan. This was what was approved and approved the density at 102 DUA. What you'll see is that the location of the buildings is very similar, and actually, the Pace Center is almost exactly where it is because that was a by right development. The size and scope of the center building, which is building C1 on this plan, is where the Carlton One is currently, and that is almost identical to what was built. And then you'll see the two outliers were smaller buildings. So when you looked at the average size of the building in this SUP plan, there were an average of 34 units per building. We're currently asking for about 51 units per building. Carlton One has 54 units, and the current designs for building A on this thing and building C2 here are about 48 units each. And that is the center of the site before it was built. This is what it looks like now. That's the Pace Center, which is an elderly daycare center meant to keep those who are eligible Medicare and Medicaid eligible out of nursing homes. So they have other supports and are able to come during the day and stay at this facility, get a couple of meals, prescriptions, overall medical care, et cetera, physical therapy. It became the commercial center of this development. The developers have done other projects around Pace Centers, Richmond Petersburg and other areas, where they started with the Pace Center and then built affordable housing to complement the commercial use. And that was the initial plan. So in 2013, as Matt said, they went for an SUP and were able to start Carlton One. So here's the site before Carlton One was built. Here's another view of the site, so you can tell it was an incredibly difficult site to develop. And there is the current building at Carlton. And just so you know, this is very similar to what would be proposed for the other buildings. These are buildings that are financially feasible and are able to earn credits at VHDA. The tax credits are vital, are really the only game in town in order to get this type of housing done. So that's the main reason why we are continuing to put forward a multifamily solution in this PUD application. And just, these are some street views showing the connectivity to the street, the neighborhood context that I think we've created here, and this is something that will continue in each of the other projects. Another view. And then I'll leave this open to Scott after saying one more thing. I think one thing Scott will touch on is the overall application plan, how we've created connectivity across the site and a cohesive design across the site. But we were also, the concern of the planning commission earlier was that we did not have a innovation in design. I think there are three elements to consider here. The first is we had an incredibly difficult site to develop, and we've created a cohesive plan mostly around affordable multifamily housing, something that is much needed in the city, but also in a very mixed-use setting where we were able to create some commercial use there and bring some employment opportunities and maintain the neighborhood context. If you go down there in the evening now, there is no activity at the Pace Center because it's an elderly daycare center. So that commercial use is a very quiet use for the neighborhood, has a lot of activity during the day, but very little at night. The second thing is that being around the Pace Center, the Pace Center is supporting these multifamily uses and by subsidizing rental for their participants when needed. And we have an MOU with Riverside, who is the current owner of that, that will provide subsidy to participants as needed. The third thing is the financing here is very innovative in that we have found a way to go down to VHDA and access tax credits, which is an incredibly limited resource. So I think those are things to consider, other than some of the innovation in design, which I'll leave Scott to talk about.
Mr. Collins, talk fast. You have about two minutes.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. I will talk fast. My name is Scott Collins. I'm a civil engineer on the project, and really, I think what I want to point out is the connectivity through the site, kind of highlighted in that purple throughout the site. We've worked really hard to create sort of a pedestrian and ADA accessibility throughout the site to all the buildings and all the facilities. So that's been real important for the project. We also incorporated a fair amount of open space, almost twice as much as we currently had or showed in the original PUD back in May. And we've even incorporated areas that we can be, not only pocket parks, but some tot lot areas and other amenity features throughout the site. One other thing I wanted to do, I wanted to touch on as far as the overall comprehensive plan for this area. I mean, currently, right now, the comprehensive plan is for business and technology, but that comprehensive plan is currently under review for some changes. And this area is one of those areas that's been slated to change to more of a commercial and commercials use on this particular site with high density around it. So this sort of kind of fits in with sort of the changes that is being reviewed under the comprehensive plan, although that's not finalized, I understand. But when we were preparing this PUD, it sort of kind of meshed in pretty well with the comprehensive plan that's currently under review. As far as everything else, innovative design, I think Kevin hit on that pretty well, but it is a challenging site, and this is really consistent with ultimately the plan that we laid out back in 2012 when we first started the project with the SUP. I'm here to answer any questions as well. I want to leave a couple of minutes for that.
Hang tight, because I'm certain we're gonna have questions for you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Commissioners?
The thing that makes this most consistent with the comprehensive plan is the affordable housing that you're gonna bring to bear. So what is the process of getting the tax credits? What happens if you don't get the tax credits? And why wouldn't we want to wait until we know you're going to get the tax credits to approve the PUD?
I'll let Kevin decide.
Well, we have tax credits on the first two projects. So Carlton Views One is complete. We have tax credits on Carlton Views Two for a 48-unit building. The next round of tax credits is March 2019, which we intend to apply for, for probably a 48-unit building on D if we're approved. We cannot go get tax credits without zoning in place. That is a requirement of getting the tax credits. So we have to get the zoning changed in order to make that happen.
What do you, what will you do if you don't get the tax credits? Will they be marketing units?
Well, I think that's how, when we talked with the city attorney, we were concerned about what happens and how much, how many times we'd go back to try to get affordable units. I think the way we tried to write these, what the intention was, that we could do affordable housing. There was no drop dead date for doing affordable housing, but if we did not get an application approved by 2019 and the financing in place, we could move on to other PUD, other uses in the PUD rezoning application.
This may be a question for legal, but one for you as well. Is a way to make the approval of the PUD contingent upon your getting the tax credits or is that just totally negate, negate your application?
Well, I think it's kind of, it sounds to me like a chicken or an egg thing because we run into trouble with VHDA more maybe than legal issue here. So when we try to go for 100% affordability, we definitely need the zoning in place in order to get the credits. And we're talking about a, you know, a $10 million project where probably $6 million of the funding is tax credits.
How would the design have, or would the design have changed if this started off with, as a PUD?
You know, that's an interesting question. I wasn't around in 2012, and I don't think that the developers were thinking, I mean, this sort of happened over a five-year period as opposed to thinking about it out of whole cloth from the very beginning. So the SUP seemed like the vehicle that made the sense. Everybody thought that 102 units would work on the site. What we found as we started developing particular parcels, the economies of scale, particularly given the difficult-to-develop site and the costs associated with that, made a 50-unit project about the size that worked. There's kind of a sweet spot for these things. And so 54 was right there, 48 because of parking constraints on the other sites. Once you get down below 45, 40, the sites become financially unfeasible and aren't competitive for credits anymore. So, you know, that's a weird way to answer your question. I just don't think that anybody was thinking about that concern back in 2012 when they went for the SUP. They thought that 34 units may work. We developed the first site. Once that was successful, we said, boy, this works. We can make, we can replicate this once or twice again, and that's kind of where we are.
And the developers owned the property, all the parcels since 1912 or had options to buy?
2012, they had, they bought the Pace Center property because that was a by right project, and they had an option to purchase the other. I think that was exercised sometime late 2013 after the SUP was approved and they were able to get the tax credits on the first project.
Okay. And how many current residents of the Carlton apartments are members of Pace?
Three.
Three?
Three, yeah. And in the first development, Carlton One, the MOU states that they will support up to 14 people with subsidy. But the Pace Center actually picks up their participants, so it's only those that are in the direst of need, and some of those sort of skip into needing full nursing care. So they can't use the Pace Center anymore. But we believe that this provides a great opportunity for those that could continue to use Pace services if they lived in close proximity. And Pace has utilized that a little less than we thought they would, but three out of 14.
Thank you.
Can you elaborate on that MOU? Are those residents not paying or paying less because they're residents of Carlton Views?
They support the rent above 30% of the tenant's income. So if the rent on an apartment was, what's the easiest, $900, they would, and the resident could only afford 300, they would support 600.
To get a segue into my next question, which is, I have a question about the pricing of these units. So in your proffer, we have a mix of units reserved for 60% AMI or less and 40% AMI or less. Are those priced at the HUD High home limits or 65%?
They're priced at LITC limits, which are established by HUD on an annual basis.
And?
They're slightly different than the, they are, it is, well, generally, the HUD High home is a 60% AMI unit, yes.
And are those 40% units priced lower or?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
So they represent 30% of a 40%, of 40% AMI. So that's the definition of being affordable, 30% of a resident's income.
And that really gets to my question. Are those units priced at 30% of that maximum income level? And then if the, if the resident makes less, they're still priced at that rent?
That's correct. And that's why on a lot of the 40% units, you have to have a subsidy that picks up the rent over the tenant's 30% of the tenant's income, if I'm saying, I think I said that right.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And VHDA requires that as part of the application. So we have to go find a subsidy to support extremely low-income residents. And that was, that's what we call the Pace subsidy, because they are providing that subsidy.
Is there a timeframe for those units to stay affordable?
30 years at VHDA is generally the extended use agreement on these. So Carlton One is that, Carlton Two will be that, and we assume Carlton Three will be that as well.
Can I ask why your proffer here only offers 20 years on the extended use?
Because there are certain outs if the affordable housing somehow doesn't work, which you don't see very often, and VHDA is very reluctant to allow for that. But it gives us an out if, if for some reason, the rents aren't supporting the building anymore. So we proffer 20 and not 30, but we have committed to 30. There is, there are certain outs at year 15 generally.
Question for you. How many current residents need full nursing care?
Well, I would assume right now, of the 54, it's only three would be the answer because that, that's who, those are the Pace participants using the Pace Center. There are no additional services at the building.
I'm sorry, you indicated that some people would not qualify for Pace because they need full nursing care. How many would those be?
Oh, I'm not sure I completely understand that. I think the answer is zero. Right. I mean, there, none of the Carlton View residents that needed full, nobody at Carlton Views would ever need full nursing care, is that, if that's what you're asking?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Let me ask, so at Carlton One, right now, there are zero people needing full nursing care, right?
Correct. The way I'm hearing that, it's a little confusing to me because that would mean they would need to be in a nursing home and would not be independent living. Carlton Views is meant to be an independent living facility, not an assisted living facility. But with the services at Pace, somebody could be assisted, and those three participants are those that I am assuming are currently assisted.
Assisted at the Pace Center?
At the Pace Center.
Not in Carlton One?
Yeah, because there are no services provided at Carlton One. The idea behind this is to do housing in close proximity to services, so people in need of that, of those services could potentially rent at Carlton Views One. But you would never have a, somebody who needed full nursing care in Carlton Views.
When this originally came forth, I was actually on the commission, so I think there was a conversation about aging in place was kind of the concept.
Well, it is until it gets beyond the capability of the services that are provided there. Pace is meant to be services in lieu of going into a nursing home. So they actually, at some point, some of their participants will need to go into a full-service nursing home, which Pace is not. It's an elderly daycare, assuming that the participant has other supports, family members that can do things at night for them, can prepare meals, can clean, bathe, et cetera.
Are, they're currently residents in Carlton One that are families with children?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. What amenities do you provide on site for those children?
There is a community center, and there are not, there are no playgrounds. We actually did not assume that we would have children in this facility. Most of the, the units are one- and two-bedroom units, so we assumed that they would be more elderly and, for, appropriate for elderly and disabled. Fair housing regulations require you to rent to families with children, and we, this, these buildings are actually preferences given to Section 8 tenants. So Section 8 families find out about a new building like this and say, oh, I can move, a single mom with one or two kids can move into a two-bedroom. And that, that happened on some occasions. We talk about 15% at 40. We have over, I think the average income at Carlton One is about $16,000. So we have a lot, because we accept housing choice vouchers, we have a lot of very low-income residents, and some of them have children, have brought children.
But you don't have the facilities to serve children, families with children, except for?
There are, there are no facilities on site. Exactly. We're probably three quarters of a mile from Riverside Park.
And you're not proposing any?
Well, we do have some opportunities at Carlton D to provide some open space, and we have talked to the residents, and we're just finding, I mean, this, Carlton One has been in operation and leased up for a year and a half, so we really didn't expect this issue that you're, that you're bringing up. And we do have some opportunity to correct that to some degree in the open space at Carlton D.
Thank you.
And in the application, Pace is listed as a joint venture of Riverside, UVA Medical Center, and JABA. My understanding is, as of November 1st, Riverside Health no longer offers Pace services. Will that have any impact on your organization?
My understanding from the developers is My understanding from the developers is that Riverside will be replaced with another partner that does. And I, I think that is in the offering now, but I don't want to speak out of school.
Thanks.
Totlots and pocket parks were mentioned, but we didn't get any detail because of time. Can you offer any detail?
You know, at this stage, we don't have anything concretely planned. And both of, all of our site plans have been, for the first three phases, are sort of, they're approved and, and that's how we will build. The only opportunity is at Carlton D where we do have some open space to do that. And we haven't programmed that space yet.
Do you have any sense, well, first off, do you know the quantity of parking spaces that are currently provided? And have any sense of the percentage that are currently filled for Carlton One?
Carlton One, I think we have 49 spaces and five shared with the Pace Center to get to the 54 that was required, one for one. I have done some non-scientific research because I live here in town. And about 10 to 12 spots are often vacant during the day, many spots. But in the evenings, we usually see 10 to 12. So we think that a 25 to 35% reduction in parking is appropriate. And the staff has already approved shared parking range between Carlton One and Carlton Two in order to move that forward, move that site plan forward.
Could I ask the engineer some questions? You didn't think I was going to let you get out of here, right? There's some, we, originally, when we were having these conversations, there was a lot of discussion. And I appreciate the purple line that you have placed on this. But you have checked and engineered this so that the slope does meet ADA requirements, so that circulation can happen throughout this.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then, pardon me, I don't, my super eyes have gone to the wayside. But can you give us some of the elevations that are on this back proposed parking? And how does that relate to the height of the building? I mean, because there's a huge wall there. I mean, there's a huge elevation difference on that site as it currently sits.
There is, and a lot of that elevation difference will be taken up with the building. Because there will be some possible proposed parking underneath that, that last building. So looking at putting some underground parking and letting the building step down as well. So that's going to help take out that elevation change right there.
But this back, the back parking, that's going to be at a lower level than, than the tracks? I can't look at?
Yes, it was, it's lower than the tracks. So there will be a small, as you're coming up that, that road to access that parking behind there, you are stepping down a little bit from the existing tracks.
And the other concern that we were having is along the pedestrian ways, along Carlton Avenue. What's that grade change? Is that, is that going to still continue to be a very steep grade change in that area? So you're making all your adjustments for ADA on-site?
A lot of it's on-site, but each of these buildings still sort of have that little plaza out in front. And that's going to remain based on the setbacks from Carlton Avenue to the buildings. And so they're still trying, they're still accommodating sort of a street scape and some type of interaction between the buildings and the street, like they accomplished with the first building. They're still accomplishing that with the other sites as well.
And one of the things that we did have a conversation about, again, many moons ago, is that the CAT and JONT service for the site itself, the, and I know that there's a, a proffer statement in there that would be worked out with CAT at the time that it's requested.
That's right.
Something to that nature. But have you thought about when that happens, where that would go on-site so that it is accessible?
Yeah, I mean, certainly there's some ability to have a circulation through the site. But what we're getting, what we're hearing from CAT is the way they have their, their traffic pattern set up, it doesn't really adhere to have it right in front of the site. They have it, I guess it's a little bit to the, to the west of the site where it comes up right now. But we're still talking with them about possibly reworking that. And certainly, you know, when the site, when the sites around this site actually redevelop every time, I think there's going to be a lot more opportunities for that as well, to sort of incorporate that. But along the street, along Carlton Avenue, we also have some on-site parking, which can actually, some of that can be, you know, four or five spaces can be removed for a bus stop if that was, if we were able to accommodate that and have some type of bus shelter in front of the site, where, within those plaza areas that where the buildings interact with the street. So there's ops, there's lots of opportunities, whether it's on-site or along Carlton Avenue.
And I bring this up again for the simple fact that you've got all of your ADA internal circulation internally. So if you put that CAT or JONT bus stop out on the sidewalk or near the front on Carlton so that people can access that, I'm not sure how, have you thought about that, that circulation for people with disabilities to be able to access that? You're mentioning something west and that navigation, and this has always been kind of a problem even that we discussed at Carlton Two with the grade prob, with the grade change there. How, how's that, that going to be accessible to somebody, say, in a wheelchair?
So our entrances, we do have sidewalks that go up our entrances that would still provide pedestrian access through to some of these ADA pathways. And then Carlton Two, we actually redesigned that building. So it has a step-down that takes you all the way from the upper area down to the lower area through elevator and then puts you outside access to that parking lot over to the Pace Center. So we handled ADA accessibility. We changed ADA accessibility for that building as opposed to what it was where you had to go out all the way out to Carlton Avenue and come around, taking care of that part.
Okay. So if I'm in Carlton Three and I'm in a wheelchair and CAT decides to put their bus stop west of this, on the west part of this property.
Okay.
I've got to follow this purple line, follow the purple line all the way through this and then get, go into Carlton Two and get an elevator and go down and then go up the sidewalk to that bus stop?
No, along the, there's a sidewalk in front of the Pace Center, that entrance that will take you out to Carlton Avenue.
Okay.
So you can, you can get that.
And that, that particular part of that sidewalk is ADA accessible? Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? We will be open public comment.
With respect to the first standard review for planning developments, encouraging developments of equal or higher quality than otherwise required. Now, we've heard some concerns about the quality of the construction in Carlton Views One. I understand council has been talking to you guys about some clawback provisions in there for their grants. Have you guys made any changes to ensure that future developments will be of higher quality?
I work for the developer as a consultant. I know that the developer is working with city council and there has been some concerns at Carlton One. But I, my perception has been that there have been a lot of growing pains at Carlton One. And the reason for the complaints have been lack of on-site management primarily. And that has caused a lot of uproar. What we're hoping is with 54 units, it's very hard to put a field, a site manager on there full-time. So they, somebody was there 20 or 30 hours a week and the tenants did not feel like they were getting the responses they needed. And that's what caused a lot of the concern. And once we build this out to 102 or 150 units for sure, we will be able to put on-site management there. So we, we believe that we're building at high quality. VHDA has minimum design construction. These are all, you know, highly energy-efficient and EarthCraft certified buildings. I think that a lot of the concerns have been related to management that has not been as responsive as we'd hoped because we are using a third-party manager.
Council, do you have any questions?
I had a question related to if you don't get the tax credits. What are the, what, you were saying that there's other uses that you could put in its place? I'm just trying to get a sense for what other options there are.
Well, I think the PUD rezoning outlines those in the use matrix. So what we've set this up, as Matt has described, is more of a mixed-use environment. So that the other uses are no longer light industrial uses. They would be light commercial uses, office spaces, and then the residential uses that we've described. And if, sorry.
Can we narrow that any further? I just, I'm not clear.
Have you read this, this use matrix?
I've seen the use matrix, yes, yes. I'm just trying to get a sense for how, you know, obviously, our goal here is the affordable housing. And if it's not achievable because of tax credits, what are other ways that we can ensure, you know, even more of a residential, you know, focus versus some other things that frankly, I don't think we need as much in that area?
Well, I think the rezoning, that the matrix that we have put forward does assure residential uses on the three sites. Because the commercial uses stay focused on the Pace Center. So I, I don't have it in front of me, but Matt described it. I think you can go from 20,000 square feet at the Pace Center to 30,000 square feet. And then you can have light commercials uses at each of the residential. But it's most likely that we'll have some sort of mixed-use building if the affordable housing does not work. So you'll have potentially commercial, we try to set up the potential commercial uses on the first floor of the primarily residential buildings that would remain residential.
At market rate at that point, yeah.
But probably market rate if we can't do it affordably. And that is just contingent on whether or not the tax credit market stays viable. And like, like I've said, we've got tax credits on two of the three buildings. And there hasn't been substantial changes to the pool that we usually go to in 2019. So we're fairly confident that we will be able to access credits this year.
But it's also, I think, important to note that under our zoning ordinance, because this is a rezoning, if you don't get the tax credits so that it can be 100% affordable, you will still provide the affordable, the amount of affordable housing that would be required in connection with whatever level of residential development is in the PUD.
Correct. So the required amount, we set up the proffer with the intent of having 30% affordable required. So if you had 150 units, that would be 50 units of affordable.
Right, which we normally don't get that specific a commitment. Normally, under our zoning ordinance, there's a requirement, it can go up to 80%. So in this proffer, they have agreed to provide the amount of affordable housing that would be required by the zoning ordinance. But in addition, they have given specific income levels within that required amount that would be met. And that's something above and beyond what we would normally get under the provisions of the zoning ordinance.
Is the intent that if you don't get the tax credits, that it will be, or sorry, if you do get the tax credits, that it will be 100% residential? Or is there a possibility to add sort of neighborhood amenity, like small grocery store type?
In the future, there would be the possibility, but once you lock down a tax credit building, it'll be 100% residential for that period of time, which is generally 30 years under the extended use agreement.
And then, Mr. Robertson, based off of this attachment F, this use matrix, without that tax credit, right, any commercial would be limited to this proffer statement under this use matrix, right?
That's right. So in a PUD, because it's its own zoning district, the uses have to be set out in the development plan. And so just like any other zoning district, this will become the zoning use matrix for this PUD district.
I don't see any hotels in this. Kidding. I'm sorry, bad joke.
So not only are the uses spelled out there, but the square footage? So the square footage is broken down by the phases. So even if there's some uses, say, for Phase Four, the, the square footage would still limit that if it's a commercial use?
So the square footage is broken down in the narrative as opposed to just in the chart?
Correct. So you have the uses, but then you also have what would be square footage allowable per, per phase?
Would you like to hear from the public?
I have a question about what other funding streams are you all going to consider if you don't receive the tax credit?
At this stage, there really is no other game in town. I mean, the low-income housing on this scale is generally done through Lytec. That's, you know, nationwide. So at this stage, that would be the, the only application we put in. We don't have any other options to do this type of building. And particularly with, with the proffer for disability units and 40%.
So then the documentation that you would show us would just be that the Lytec credits weren't approved for the project?
Right. And we will make that application. We, I was at VHDA today at the how-to-apply seminar. And, you know, we intend to make that application this round in 2019.
And, and if you don't get those tax credits, then you also don't get the CAF funding. So it's an additional delta that you have to make up. Because the Charlotte Affordable Housing Fund is contingent on this being.
Well, exactly. I think if we don't get the tax credits, it's likely that we will either try for tax credits in the, the next round, which is, would be 2020 round, or we would try to go for another use that is allowable.
But do you have a commitment to hold off until 2020? Because earlier you mentioned 2019.
Well, 2019 is not meant to be a drop-dead date. It's meant to be a date that releases the developer to do other uses. Correct?
That's correct. That's what, what you had indicated, yeah.
That's what we tried to proffer, yeah. So what, what we know now is that we will have two buildings affordable because we already have tax credits for Carlton Two. What we're hoping is that we can get tax credit for Carlton Three and that nothing changes between now and our attempt to, to get an allocation of credits and syndicate those credits. But if it does, then the developer would like the opportunity to do other uses that were allowable under the PUD after 2019.
So that could be a potential condition? No?
This is a PUD, so there wouldn't be any conditions that we could put on this. That can only be done in a special use permit conversation. So what we're voting on tonight is a planning development that is before of us, that has been advertised as it stands. We would not be able to add or add anything. Right.
And just so you know, our intent is to do this affordably. We don't have any other options at this stage. We're not considering other options for uses. You know, we believe that we can do this affordably, and if we get the tax credits, that's how we'll move. But the developer did not want to be stuck without being able to develop other options or at least pursue other options for an indefinite period of time.
If another funding stream, if, if tax credits were not approved for some reason, and then some other streams came available, would you apply for that?
Certainly, yeah. And, and just so you know, that we do have to apply for other streams. Obviously, the city funds are vital to these things. But we also go to DHCD for home funds and National Housing Trust funds, which we probably will apply for. But those funds are really meant to be gap sources, not the primary source. The tax credits, like I said, a 10 million or $11 million projects, $5 or $6 million is tax credit. So if you don't get that number, it's very hard to find that anywhere else.
I have one last question, and it's probably from Mr. Prime, the engineer. I walked the site today and it seemed rather steep in a certain area and I'm doing some quick calculations. In front of the Carlton One building, from that entry along the dashed purple line that you put on the site plan as the accessible route within the site, to the road to the east is a 10-foot drop over about 150 to 170-foot length, which is, of course, steeper than what's allowed by code for an accessible route, 1 to 20. So I don't find that even among the, in the route that connects to buildings, that it's handicapped accessible.
You're talking about the access road down from?
I'm talking, that purple path from the front, the north side of Carlton One to the road on the east. That's a, a steep drop.
Right. Well, other things that can be done in order to make it handicapped accessible is to add railings. We haven't incorporated that yet because that part to the east has not been constructed yet. So certain aspects in order to meet handicap ADA accessibility would be incorporated at that time.
at that time.
Okay. I thought I was understanding that that's an accessible route now, but it clearly would need some changes to make it accessible. I mean, not just railings, but it's going to need a level, intermediate landing.
There may be a switchback or two, yes. But as that building's built out, we can incorporate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Definitely.
Okay. At this time, we will open public comment on this application. Please come and limit yourself to three minutes, and this is only for the Carlton Views PUD. And, Mr. Affleck, do I have anyone signed up for this?
No one signed up. Only Bill.
I think so, too. Hang tight. So if there is one, please like to speak, please state your name, and then we can move forward. Please speak in the microphone. Again, since we don't have a recorder here, we're going to be using this as a recording, so... And, Ms. Chris, you will start your three minutes when you give us your name. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. My name is Bill Emery. I live at 1604 East Market Street, and I apologize for reading comments. I know it's not the best way. You know, PUD ordinance was introduced to improve design of new neighborhoods and preserve meaningful open space. This PUD rezoning application is an afterthought, an inappropriate use of the PUD ordinance to increase density while the quality of life for the residents of this project takes a hit. Carlton Views, the approved Carlton Views Apartments One and Two are already approximately 95% Crescent Hall-sized. They're 102 units. The PUD rezoning would increase the density for economically and physically vulnerable people, pile them in a people warehouse. Carlton Views is located in a non-supportive area, a food desert, services desert. There's not squat in East Belmont Carlton. Apologies to the residents for that comment. Its design is a step backward from Friendship Court. In terms of amenities for residents, Friendship Court was built in 1978. This PUD rezoning is out of sync with the land use plan, the city's land use plan. It's out of sync with good zoning practice. It's out of step with equity. The region, the 176-acre East Belmont Carlton, has never been studied, never been planned for. There is no existing small-area plan. Planning is best before action is taken. One cannot back into a PUD. It's my hope, when council denies the rezoning, the applicant will build some of the things the zoning matrix allows, the zoning matrix with the SUP allows for in Lot D, like daycare, a convenience store, incubator space for small business, a playground for the Carlton Views One and Two children, a covered place for the elderly people to sit outside. And then, just on the question of the city's industrial area, this, these parcels represent 2% of the 3.2% of the city, which is owned for industrial uses. And this PUD zoning, frankly, is spotlight. If one were to consider a rezoning of this very limited manufacturing industrial resource, we should do it citywide so as to avoid a lawsuit. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Emery. If there is anyone else that would like to speak, please come forward. Just give us your name.
Thank you. My name is Mary Ann Nesbit, and I'm a resident at 1337 Carlton Views. I have not lived there quite a year yet, and I have seen improvements happen, especially with management. When you speak of the accessible attributes of this facility, the way it was built, looking at what Pace has done next door to it, yes, some of those residents do use it. Some of them have then also moved on to permanent care elsewhere. Looking at the way that it's designed, I am concerned for the building that's going to be going up next door, just because of the spacing, and also knowing that we have a great industrial park that's very needed right close to us. Across the street from us is another terrace, I believe it's called, Terrace of Carlton View, where there are trailer homes. The access roads that go by this are pleasant, and the traffic is all doable. Yes, we have people with multiple needs here, and this facility, when I first viewed it, I saw it as a place that was very functional for those that would be in my age group, per se. I'm not seeing that it does accommodate when you have Section 8. That is a fact. But the facility is very much needed for people that it was originally designed for. It's beautifully constructed, it's solid, and it does provide security and comfort. It does not have a playground area. I don't even see where you could put one in to be feasible. I wanted to make these points because I have lived there, I've looked at the project, and years ago, when we sold our farm in another state, I was part of the development, and part of my input went in to put in an area that had private homes, individual family homes, multiple homes. We also brought in this type of a facility so it could accommodate the low-income people. The city needs it, the city benefits from it, the residents do, but there has been problems, and the new management is certainly on top of it. So I wanted to put a real positive note into this, and I do look forward to the future and the expansion, but I also viewed it again today and looked at the aspects of it, your degrees of level, and where the next proposed area is meant to be. You've got a railroad track that is still very busy and functioning, and these buildings are close to it. So I just wanted to let you know that I live there, I find it functioning, but I also find there are deterrence when we don't keep it within, let's say, the aspect of what it was originally planned for.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Mark Cavett, 400 Altona Street. Want to ditto basically what Bill Elmore said, and also the letter that he wrote to the board. There's a couple of things that I want to address. As I mentioned in May, I was employee at Pace for over two years, so I know the facility extremely well, the, we used to call them participants, that were in the facility. Everyone that is in the facility does qualify for nursing home care under the Virginia formula that they use for that. The idea is to keep them out of it by providing them with the support. We actually do have 10 to 15 people that stay at the Monroe and another facility, nursing home, in Madison County, and come to Pace maybe two, three times a week. One of my biggest concerns is the parking for the location, and I'm going to pass this around, which showed, and this was taken before Carlton View One was built, before Carlton One View was finished being built. If you go there now on any day, and if you get there after 8:30, all the parking spaces are gone. The employees in Pace are now parking in the road, have been for quite some time, and up the road a little bit. So there is no extra parking. I want to be sure that's understood. And the facility has been very concerned, when I was employed there, as to how they were going to accommodate the shared parking. They even looked at the possibility of running a shuttle with a parking lot off-site someplace else in the area to accommodate the employees. I have also been, I used to go into Carlton One almost on a daily basis, so I'm very familiar with the building, would go into the apartments and see some of the things. I was very concerned about the management. Hopefully, maybe if they did have more units, the management would be better, and the property on the outside would be kept in better shape. Where the purple line is, I used to walk on a daily basis between the front of the Pace Building over to Carlton View, and where the road bed is there, that's a very steep area. I had to push a 400-pound person from one building to the other building and then back home. One of the PTs actually joked with me one day, said, "Hope you don't let go over, because she's going to knock a hole in the wall, side of the wall, when she goes through." So that's a very steep area, and as a side note, I actually have a business now that I'm installing and selling ramp systems, so I'm very familiar with slope, and that's a long way from being ADA, nowhere near it. The entire area is very sloopy, and it would be very difficult for someone that was in a wheelchair by themselves. Currently, Riverview is providing, is committed to providing four spaces in Carlton One, with no plans to increase that. One person died, and is now three there.
Thank you, Mr. Cavett. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this project?
Sure, I would. Of course, I would. Nancy Carpenter. I live in Rose Hill. I'm concerned about the low-income tax credits. Yes, we do need affordable housing, but one of the things in the last year and a half we've learned through the National Low Income Housing Coalition, that due to the humongous tax cut that was given to a lot of people that provide funding for low-income tax credits, sometimes the availability of those funds have been limited, and that's an ongoing issue. So I don't know, you know, how 100% those funds would be able, hopefully, they'll be applied to this project. But the other thing is, you know, 30 years ago, when I was a planning technician in Culpeper County, PUDs were kind of the new kid on the block, I think. And the idea was to have close-in housing, but also have amenities for families. And unfortunately, I don't see that there's anything, you know, even if you have a single mom or a couple with one child, that there's any place for that child to be able to have any outside time safely, or where a mother can, you know, or a father can watch their child. And that, to me, should be, you know, paramount. What's the quality of life for folks here? We heard one lady say that she's had an enjoyable quality of life down there, but it is a food desert. There are some topography issues down there as far as people with limited mobility. I mean, hearing Mr. Cavett talk about a joke that somebody said about someone, you know, zooming into a wall is not really funny, because it could literally happen. So I think that there are some issues with the development of this last phase that I hope that you, you know, critically look at and, you know, think about the quality of life for folks that are, you know, in that area. I know that the management has changed. I know very well the management has changed, but there are, you know, still some things that aren't even really nice about the first one. I remember this spring, I believe, there was another, or my months run together, but there were people here talking about the tiny bit of green space that was in the original building, and how folks that have dogs, which is fine, but they walk their dogs, and they don't clean up after them, unfortunately. And they were really frustrated with the fact that, you know, what green space there was, they couldn't really sit out and enjoy because of all the dog crap around. So that's, you know, a management issue, but it also means that there's not very much land to be able to use in a way that creates quality of life for you. If you want to be, if your option is to be in a tall warehouse of people, you ought to be able to have some outside space that you can kind of stretch, and especially if you're going to have kids. Kids need to stretch. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Is there anyone else here that'd like to speak for this project? Seeing that, I will close the public hearing and open this for commissioner discussion. Thank you, counsel.
Well, I'm starting our discussion. I'm a little torn. I will say that compared to any other developer, I do like the fact of the quantity of the amount of affordable units that you guys are providing without us having to beat down the door to get them. My only, my biggest concern, or the catch-22 to that, is that if you do not get the tax, or if they do not get the tax credits, then what? Because I believe, and I'm not going to speak for the whole commission, I'm going to speak for myself, but I'm pretty sure we are ecstatic about the units, but if we don't get the affordable units, then we're in a bit of a bind.
Sorry, I probably should have asked this in the question period, but I just want to make sure or clarify you guys. As I understand it, if they don't get the tax credits, it's still 30% affordable at 60%, plus 15% at 40%?
That's right.
That's right.
That's what the proffer says. So if you notice in the proffer, it talks about affordability, and then it has an alternative provision that says, if we get the tax credits, it will be 100% affordable at these limits. If they don't get the tax credits, you still get affordable housing at those things, it's just in a lesser total number.
And that is in the packet that we've talked about earlier today, that Carlton...
Page 27?
Seventeen, actually. Seventeen on the Carlton Views Development PUD Application Plan. This is the front of it. There's a lot of page numbers in this packet, but this is seventeen of that particular part of that packet.
I have a thought, too, that the, I agree, the numbers are impressive and move us in a direction of a major goal for the city, but we are talking about 20 years from now. This is still going to be there, and the type of restrictions and lack of amenities in terms of not only the quality of life in two, three, five-year-old facilities, but a 20-year-old facility is what we really need to be thinking about. What does this place look like in 20 years?
I, you know me, I'm not big on the PUD, so I think they waited for this for John Santowski to leave, but, we won't go down that, but I was specifically impressed with the use matrix, because so many times, this is very glossed over, and when you look at this, I think it's very intentional. Some of the use matrix is talking about the very things that we are talking about. The, gosh, where was that just? It had a restaurant, I'm pretty sure that's in there for Pace, but it also had other things like the retail. It had convenience store, and the things that we're talking about. And so I'm also torn with this. I really like the affordable units. The site, I'm very familiar with. I walked down, I've walked down there a million times in the past 15 years that I've lived in that area, so I'm very familiar with the grade and the accessibility issues. But I have a question for the commission, and this is a question I'm asking myself. While the amenities aren't there right now, when we're talking about redeveloping and trying to get these specific units, are we going to say, no, we don't want this affordable housing, or no, we don't want this right now because the amenities are not there yet? Is this a chicken and egg? Are we saying, you need to build the amenities first? And this, like I said, this is a question I'm asking myself, and are we going to then also say, okay, and this is maybe something we talk about in our comprehensive plan as we discuss this, is there a percentage that we say is open green space? I mean, we haven't really talked about that, but we've touched on it in a lot of places. I mean, what's that percentage? And then we look at a lot of things, and again, these are all the thoughts that are going through my head, so sorry about the stream of consciousness. What is the conversation that we have when we talk about those areas that are next to parks? Because it's not very far from two different parks that I walk to pretty much at least on a weekly basis, if not two or three times a week. So is it that it's all needed to be provided on-site, or is this places that it's close to? So those are the struggles in my head I'm having. Yes, these, this is a food desert, for sure. I'd love to have a market through there, but somebody's got to do it. And so are we going to hold off on all affordable housing until that happens? Or are we going to make, you know, are we requiring a certain percentage? Again, I'm very conscious of the ADA and the ramps and the grade, very conscious of that. I live there. Not there, I live in the area.
The purpose of a planned urban development is to allow, is first... The purpose of a planned urban development is to allow, is first to come in at the very beginning of a project, and then through, through innovative design, be able to cluster the buildings so as to create open spaces and amenities and create a greater quality of life for the community that inhabits the, the PUD. In our, in our particular case here, in this particular case, it is being brought in way too late. It's inexpedient to maximize the density on the site and do, and, and at the same time offer no benefits by having a well-thought-of innovative design that, that has already created the opportunity for outside amenities and the quality of life for the residents and the community that's gonna be on this site. I, I, I feel like my role as a planning commissioner is to, is to support good planning practices. I cannot support this because, because of the mockery it makes of a PUD.
Who I am, I have to agree with Jody that this really is nothing more than a technical means to an end. There's no way that we're gonna get, we're gonna get additional 52 units on the site unless you go use the PUD route, the only way to get there. But we do have a positive affordable housing in the city, and the only way to, to get 52 units on that site is to allow for the, the PUD. I do worry that the tax, tax credits will not be approved, but even if they are, we still buoy up the number of, the number of affordable units in the, in the city.
And I hate to see the precedent set that if there, if it's an affordable housing development, then it doesn't deserve good community.
But I, I, I think we, we are close to being able to fix this. The reason that we had to use a technical means to an end is because our zoning practices and policies are not such that there was another way to get here. So I, I think we're close once we get to the comp plan and once, once we can get through rezoning, I think we're close to being able to fix this.
Not with the site plan we have in front of us.
Well, yeah, again, this, this is a means to an end in this case.
I have to agree with that. As Mr. Emery said, I'd like to see this sort of thing be possible anywhere across the city without using technicalities. I'd also submit that there's plenty of open space in this site plan, it's just all covered in asphalt.
For parking, right?
Oh, my God. You're gonna kill me. Y'all are gonna kill me. I've seen us approve way worse projects for two units, and that's where my heartburn comes in on this. Way worse unit, way worse projects with the, with the, with affordable of 80% AMI and only five years. So while I agree, I hate the PUD and I hate this technicality, hate it.
You can't judge a PUD by what's being brought here, though. This is not fair. This gives a black eye to a PUD.
There's a lot of things that gives a black eye to a PUD, and there's a hotel on the corner of the street down there for that.
Could we argue also that that's why there is a planning commissioners, people, it's, this is not a plug-in-the-data-and-decide-if-a-PUD-is-appropriate-or-not. It's, it's a group of people trying to move the community forward.
Yeah, and I'm just one.
Right.
I have a question for staff. I'm looking over the bike ped plan, and I see an arterial trail running directly from this site to Riverview Park. How, what, what kind of timeline are we talking about on that?
I missed that, I know.
I wanna say long.
Great.
Thanks. I, I don't have really anything to add. It's not been anything that's come up into anyone's knowledge recently.
To reveal my thinking on that, Riverview Park, as we saw in our survey results, one of the most popular parks in the region, a huge, a huge potential asset for us that we are not, in my view, going far enough to get people to and to enjoy. If we can get these people to Riverview Park, that's great.
That's why these are ambulatory challenged community we're talking about here. They're walking, that you're doing, you're doing.
All right.
You see what it's in?
And I would say that trail connection, as far as one of the biggest hurdles would be Franklin. If you've been down there, the, I mean, it...
The railroad bridge.
Yeah, it's railroad bridge, one, one-way traffic, so.
It's a, it's a definite adrenaline, exciting trip to go under that, Ronald Tressel. And I'm a bit of an adrenaline junkie, so I do enjoy it. But yeah, it's, it's, yeah. But anyway.
Would like to make a motion, if I may, ma'am.
Okay.
Please.
I, I move to recommend approval of this application to rezonate the property from MI to PUD on the basis that this proposal would serve, would serve the interest of the general public and the, and the general public.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would we'd like to have any further discussion? Ms. Creasy, would you please call roll?
Mr. LaHindro?
No.
Mr. Soli Yates?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
No.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Stolzberg?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
And Ms. Green?
It's not gonna matter, but I'll say aye. Motion carries. I hope we get this PUD thing fixed quicker than most other things, 'cause...
Are you asking for his ETA initiation?
We, we went down that path one night, and it was an ugly path, remember? So we're not doing that tonight. I'm sorry y'all missed that, it was very exciting. Thank you all for coming and your participation. I had one thing that I missed that I wanted to say before we move into the Entrance Corridor Review Board, and that's my apologies to the commission as part of my report. We had had a conversation, and I wanted to just make a statement on the new hill project. That is not something that we reviewed or had any knowledge of whatsoever as a commission. And so if there were any questions that were had on that, we are just as surprised at the, at the project that has been commenced as the rest of the community. So with that being said, I will gavel us out of the planning commission and gavel us into the Entrance Corridor Review Board and ask, I forgot who. Mr. Warner to please come and give us your presentation.
This is a entrance corridor review for Dairy Central Building. This is phase two of the project. The parcel address is 946 Brady Avenue, but this is on the southern portion of that parcel. Just quickly, I know some of you were here in March and June, some were not, so if you've got questions, as I'm go through quickly, we can discuss those at the end, okay? The applicant is requesting a certificate of appropriateness for a 28, 228,700-square-foot apartment building. It will have 175 units, approximately 1,400 square feet of commercial space and a parking garage beneath the building. This project, which is phase two of a four-phase development, is on the southern section of a four-and-a-half-acre parcel within the Preston Avenue Entrance Corridor. The parcel is, this larger parcel is occupied by the buildings associated with the former Monticello Dairy. Phase one, which is in the northern section, contains the dairy buildings and is a designated, is designated as an individually protected property, and the BAR has approved the COA for phase one. Phases two, three, and four are outside of the IPP and therefore subject to your review. That's why we're here discussing phase two tonight. Relative to this proposal, back in March, the ERB reviewed a special use permit request to increase the residential density and the building height. The ERB found that these would not adversely impact the corridor. In June, the planning commission approved that special use permit, which was later approved by council. The planning commission's approval included three conditions related to design, and I will be, I'm paraphrasing here. One was that the design, height, density, and other characteristics shall remain essentially the same as presented, understanding that some changes might come up in the design review. However, substantial changes shall require modification to the SUP. Second was along 10th Street Northwest, the fifth floor shall step back a minimum of 10 feet from the floors below. And third, along West Street, the fifth floor shall step back a minimum of 45 feet from the property line. All of those have been addressed in this application. Also at that meeting, there were four comments, requests that were made. One was that the courtyards be designed as useful spaces. Two, the 10th Street elevation must not present, represent a back wall to the street. Three, a screening of the parking garage from West Street. And four, that the landscaping plan that was shown will, will remain. And all of those are addressed in this supplemental. In fact, except for a few minor changes, and that's primarily to some window and balcony locations, the massing scale, design materials match what you all reviewed in March and June. Relative to the design, the project features three bays separated by courtyards, with the bays joined by a building fronting on the alley between phase one and phase two. The bays, courtyards, setback, contemporary design, variation, materials, textures, and colors complement the adjacent phase one buildings and produce a design that is more compatible with the adjacent residential neighborhood, and, and that's as compared to a monolithic structure with limited materials. Therefore, the design and details are consistent with the design guidelines. Relative to the materials and colors, the first-floor walls are brick with metal storefronts and punched windows, excuse me, punched windows. The upper floors are a combination of brick and either fiber cement or metal panels, and they'll have punched windows, recessed balconies with glass doors and metal railings. There will be a rooftop pertinence to screen equipment. The mixture of light and dark materials and of material types provides texture. The brick and fiber cement panels, in that they simulate stucco, are consistent with material types typically seen in the city. The building materials and color palette are consistent with the design guidelines. Relative to the design and the arrangement of the buildings on the site, the three primary facades engage the street. The wide sidewalks, landscaping, including street trees at 10th and West Street, create shade and a sense of enclosure and defined edges. The benches enhance the pedestrian experience. The courtyards provide open space for the building's occupants. Parking garage is accessed through the alley, that's between phase one and two. There's a bike storage room near the building lobby. The design guideline, design and arrangement of the buildings is consistent with the design guidelines. Relative compat, to compatibility with the Preston Avenue Entrance Corridor, the proposed building, streetscape, site improvements, and site lighting are all compatible with this entrance corridor. Relative to the city's vision for the Preston Avenue Entrance Corridor, a key goal is, quote, "Create a variety of new mixed-use, larger-scale projects." Relative to the zoning, the intent of the central city corridor designation is to facilitate the development and redevelopment of medium-scale commercial and mixed-use projects. This project complies with both of those. Excuse me. Furthermore, this project provides a residential component to a larger mixed-use project, of which a key component is the adaptive, adaptive reuse and rehabilitation of a historic structure. With that, staff supports the proposed design and recommends approval with a series of conditions, and I assume you have them there. I don't know if you want me to read through them. I do want to note that number three, which addresses the glass, the first-floor glass, and there is a, the applicants here are, are here and can present the materials, but the first-floor glass is 70 VLT, and we, we've had the discussions about the definition of clarity of glass, as you know, from the discussions at Tarleton Oak. But this does, the storefronts are 70 VLT as typically required. The windows and doors in the residential units are probably of a lower VLT, possibly as low as 56. And so I wanted to make sure that in any conditions, if you are amenable to the 56 VLT, that we, as we did with Tarleton Oaks Express, what's unique about this site and the use of that glass. And I've offered some suggestions here. Also, at the bottom, I have an alternative, and I say to number two, that's an error, that's an alternative to that number three. In that case, I simply left the VLT blank if you all believe that there's something more appropriate that you would like the applicant to consider. So that's a quick tour through a, a long description. Any questions? Okay. And I said, I believe the applicant's...
Haven't we already done this?
How many, what?
Haven't we, didn't we already do?
Yeah, you know, it's like Tarleton Oaks.
I feel like I've seen this thing way more.
I know in the BAR, we've had a lot of discussions on this. I wasn't involved in the, the design discussions you guys had in, in March and June, so, but...
So when we did phase, we did phase one.
Phase one was what the BAR reviewed, and that was to the, to the existing building, like where...
You all heard other reports on this, so that's why it's familiar. There were a couple work sessions, a number of activities, so this is...
I've just got a neophyte question. This is on the back of the building, this is on, this is not in the entrance corridor. Why do we have to review this if it's not actually touching the entrance corridor?
Because it's a parcel, that's full parcel, correct, is, and then the piece where the old dairy is, that segment is designated the IPP, not the entire parcel.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay, I got it.
All right. That might be a question for Lisa.
No, no, it's clear.
Let's talk windows. So what is the public interest in clear glass in residential uses?
Should have brought that memo, and Jody can chime in on the glass. If you recall, on Tarleton Oaks, they had asked to use a, a lower VLT, and the BAR was instructed to take a look at it. What we found is that in neither the BAR design guidelines or the entrance corridor design guidelines is 70 established as, as a hard number. However, it's become sort of the standard that we use. The ration, so that's where 70 comes from. The rationale is that at 70, and it's particularly in concern, as it concerns storefronts, you know, imagine something on the mall or Berwick's Road Shopping Center, that that glass at that, that street level, you don't have a mirror or something that's dark. The thing is, is as you go higher up on a building and you transition to punched windows instead of a storefront, the design circumstances can change. And also, what we know is that most glass in, as I listed here, some of the commercially available windows, residential windows, is in that range of the, you know, 50s to, you know, maybe to the lower 60s, but normally in the 50s. So that's what you get with that sort of thing. I think in these, in this case here, it's, the idea is you don't get a big glass building that is, you know, looks like a big mirror. We don't have that case here. We don't have window walls. Does that make sense? And now, if, if perchance, and again, Mr. LaHindro can, can chime in because we've had in both discussions, if, if there's a sense that 56 is, is too dark, I've looked at lots and lots and lots and lots of glass samples, and I would say it's, it's fine as long as that lower level where those storefronts are is at 70. I think you're okay with it.
And I know enough to, to say that it's way too complicated for me to understand. But we saw the samples, and there's a lot of characteristics, not just VLT, that affects glass and, and the transmission of, of light through it. And, but looking at the samples, there was negligible difference between the 56% and 70.
Really?
Yeah. You could hardly tell.
Yeah.
And so that's why it's such a standard with residential windows, that 56.
I think you'll see also, when Lee presents the renderings, you'll see the elements of phase... Phase One, where there's a, a building that's all glass, or a segment of that building, and sort of that comparison of now you've got punched windows, you know, incrementally in, in, in walls, it doesn't have the same effect. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question, and I'm not trying to be funny, I promise.
I don't mind, I'm funny all the time.
But is this Phase One, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're not reviewing that, that we're reviewing this Phase Two in the back.
Correct.
Why, did BAR approve this cow on the side?
I can, I can, I can answer that.
Yes?
That was before my time, but Mr. Quill, yes. As long as it does not have, as long as it does not, yeah, it's not a copyrighted logo or it doesn't become a marketing piece.
What's the matter with the cow? I like it.
It was an interesting discussion.
Why would they put a cow on?
I thought it was very imaginative.
Are you kidding me?
Now, 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 that was a BAR approval in concept.
I may have to go speak to the BAR. I can't even imagine why you'd put a cow on the side of the building. And isn't this on, isn't that the side on 10th Street?
Correct, correct.
So why would you put a cow on the side of the building on our...
It's a dairy.
It's a dairy, it's a dairy, yes.
I do.
Okay.
A chicken.
I'm not going to be able to get over this, I'm not going to lie to you.
But, um...
It's bothered me since I've been reviewing the packet last week. Why would we put a cow there?
And I, and I, as, as Lee will show you, I think what's really important to recognize is that, yes, the entrance corridor is Preston Avenue, and what is happening with Phase Two is its visibility from the corridor, it's, it's not insignificant, but it's not up on the street. So I think viewing it in the context of what's been approved at Phase One is, is sort of critical to seeing how this design works together.
Okay, any more questions for...
Back on windows. So, I, I don't know the window market, sorry to say. How big of a burden are we talking about with the 56% requirement? Is that eliminating a ton of window options? Is that relatively minor? How would you scale that?
How do I feel? The, the, as Jody pointed out, there's, there are about six different numbers that are used in looking at, at glass. We, good, bad, pro, con, have come down in using the VLT. You see some glass that has coatings on it, so it might be greener or bluer or browner than, than just clear. Some, but the VLT, as the BAR has explored it, it, it really comes down to that reflectivity. At what point does it become a mirror? One of the reasons, and the architect can, can address this, is that they used a lower VLT on that glass building on Phase One, is you have an office space where some of it has to do with energy conservation, you know, but it also is you have people in there. And, you know, if they're, the sense of working like in an aquarium wall, you know, it's weighing those. So, and that's where the BAR determined that if there's a good design argument, that there's a good reason for this, to deviate from that tacitly approved 70 VLT, make that case, and we'll adjust accordingly. With the intent being, each project should be reviewed on its own merits, and, and again, why I'm saying here, if we're going to change something or accept something lower, then let's be clear on why these circumstances are different. But as far as the glass market goes, if you're doing, you know, you're going down to Scholtsel Glass and doing a storefront, you get a metal frame custom-made, and then they get glass that's from a glass manufacturer that's sized, built to fit that opening, whereas something that's coming off the assembly line of a, of a commercial window manufacturer, not quite that simple to say, you know, oh, let's just put in different glass. This is sort of the glass we use, does it meet your criteria? Yes, no, that's what we're producing. So it's not impossible, but it, it's, I, I think, well, I'm going to leave it to you to ask the designer what he thinks.
I would like to offer this as an option, so that we, because we have a lot of glass discussion at these meetings, and as riveting as it is, and as much as I'm learning, maybe after we get through this comp plan, this first little phase, where we have a work session where we're just looking at each other, nothing to do, that you might come and talk to us about glass and show us differences so that we can understand, and then when we get up here, we're, we're knowledgeable, ready to go.
Yeah, Jody's right. We, I have, I have maybe 100 samples in my office, and...
What do you think? Good idea?
I defy you to find the difference in some of them.
But you need to see the samples outside, though. You can't do it under artificial light in a windowless room. And, because it, it has to do with reflectivity, the angle that you look at it.
June work session, is that what you're saying?
Probably in a park somewhere with a cooler...
Or in a bar.
So we could do it Saturday. We could do it Saturday. Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
So, at this time, we'd like the applicant to come and make his presentation. I'd remind you, you have 10 minutes total. I know you got a big group of people here, so you might want to hold off on the sales pitch, it's already done, and maybe go straight for the technical. And I don't want to talk about the cow. I'm very upset about this cow. Jody, how did you let that cow happen?
I'm just going to get the cow.
Jody.
We sent down a very abbreviated presentation, because we don't think you need to see the whole application again, but we want to make sure it's loaded up, because if not, we have jump driving.
I can really bear the cow.
Yeah, close that.
It's on.
I think you need to have this, this glass, and I'm really serious about that.
Oh, it's, it's...
David.
Is the real person back there?
Yeah, David.
This mother...
Didn't have the control on that.
I left just as confused as I was before I started. Yeah, that's the important part.
It's like a presentation. Presentation is a presentation. Yeah, my neck. All right, and I'm gonna, not trying to talk to the cow.
It doesn't have the full slide.
It's worse now.
Some people have a personal space.
We got a picture of this.
We're trying to get the slide so you can see the full slide, not just the upper portion, so.
45 seconds in.
I spent a whole week thinking about this clock.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's all about scheduling. There we go.
Okay. Okay, good evening, commissioners. We did prepare a presentation for the, the new commissioners that were not with us the last time we went through this project, so we thought it would be worth taking a few minutes just to reorient people to the site and to what's, what's already been approved and where we are today. I'm here with Lee Quill from Cunningham Quill Architects, they're the, the lead designer for the entire Dairy Central project. And I'm Chris Henry, the developer with Stony Point Design Build. So in front of you is a picture along, at the intersection of 10th Street and Grady Avenue, looking towards West Main Street. Phase One of the project is under construction, where we have the mural of the cow. That's actually referencing an old picture we found from the 70s, where they had like a 20-foot-tall caricature of a cow. It, it wasn't inflatable, it was made out of plastic or something, but it was standing in front of the building as kind of this, this neat beacon to the ice cream shop that used to run there. So there is a story behind the cow, and the BAR thought it was compelling, and, and it's been approved, so we plan to actually paint the cow mural on the side, and, and obviously it's, it's a point of conversation, which is what we hoped. Next is a, is an image along Grady Avenue, looking at the other direction along the front of the building. This is a new public plaza that's being constructed in, in front of Monticello Dairy. This will be immediately adjacent to the, the Market Hall, that's being constructed right now in Phase One, and then behind that, there's four floors of office space above a structured parking level. We just wanted to remind the commission of the extensive community engagement process that we conducted, starting with the Phase One design review process through the BAR, culminating with a series of community meetings and a small community design group that, that we met with monthly as we were preparing submissions to try and, and communicate and have lines of communication open with the neighborhood. So that was a great process. We plan to continue meeting with the neighborhood as the project gets under construction and as different phases like the community room and, and things like that come online, so we can figure out how to establish those relationships. Next, I'll turn it over to Lee to go through the details of the design.
Thank you, thank you, Chris. And Lee Quill from Cunningham Quill. I'm going to go back to just, to these two original pictures, because it's very important. This is a entrance corridor review, so we wanted, these two images are trying to show what Phase Two looks like. So Phase Two starts behind the cow, where the buildings come up into the center of the site. We'll talk more about that. And as you look at it from Wood Street, the new Wood Street extended, you'll see the front building, you'll see the addition on top, you'll see kind of a green addition, that is the office building, which is part of Phase One. And just beyond that, you'll see a little dark area on the upper left-hand corner, and the white kind of with the lights, that's Phase Two. So while this is back behind, you do see it from the corners, but it's not front and center, but it still, you need to see what it looks like. So the location here, as you can see in red, is the Phase Two, which is on the corner of 10th and West Street, the bike behind the dairy building. The aerial here will show, this is the older building, so we're in the upper left-hand corner of the upper left-hand image, and over here, we're on the right-hand side, the kind of edge right through where you see all the trucks, that is the site of Phase Two in this area today. Again, you've seen how this was broken down, because this came to you before in both our March preliminary discussion, which we had with, some of you weren't here then, but we had a preliminary March hearing after everybody got sick in February, and we're here, if you all remember that. And then we came back in June for Planning Commission, and then July for City Council, and received approval from both groups at that particular time. And as Jeff mentioned earlier, we have not changed the layout and all that, it's all the same, except for a couple of windows at the locations, as he said. But again, the front is important, there's a breakdown in the frontage along West Street, the activation we'll talk about on, on 10th Street. We broke this into a street and block plan to provide interconnectivity in the block for pedestrians, as well as some vehicles, again, addressing it. And as Jeff said, the main entrances to the garage and the loading are internal, along the alley muse. And we've got the entrance to the office building in the area right across from the red block at the upper right, that's the office entrance, and we have the entrance to the residential building in that area, creating a synergy of activity for these pedestrian-focused streets. This was the diagram you saw in June. Again, what Jeff talked about of the setbacks that we followed, et cetera, the openings and the porosity, porosity along West Street, et cetera, that's exactly where we are today, as you can see in this image. No changes on those, but wanted to take you back to what you had seen. Again, the important things in seeing with this and the reason for these images are, we stepped up, we stepped, we kept it low with the existing historic building, and then stepped up toward the middle of the site with, where you see the Phase One now, where the office building is located. And likewise, in the center of the site, again, the height of the residential building, the higher portion was back there, and then as we come toward the residential neighborhood, toward the south and over to the, to the west a little bit, we stepped down. Very important to kind of have this up and then stepping back down to the neighborhood. Okay. And then again, this is the view, you can see the step down and up. Again, these renderings are, this is the entrance to the lobby along Wood Street, and rough articulation of the green treatment and the landscape, which you'll see in the plan in a moment. This is our corner from 10th and West, where the retail space will go. We've activated the street along West Street, excuse me, along 10th Street, with individual entrances to the units, as you see there, with stairs, and then there are a couple planters and planted area along 10th Street. The trees are outboard at this point to provide protection from the pretty busy 10th Street. Along West Street, we had had conversations about how the planters should work, how we should activate the corner, et cetera. This has all been worked out with Water Street, who is our landscape architect, on this, and with the stairs and activating that corner going, so this is the corner of 10th, excuse me, of Weston Wood. And then this is the corner of 10th going into the alley, which is backing at the backside of the Dairy Central project, and you see the loading and garage entrance. We have the materials board here, you have images if you'd like to see them, these sort of images and the materials that we talked about and Jeff mentioned. And then this is the landscape plan, which again follows direction to discussions we had with you all back in June with City Council, getting into numerous trees, plantings, the planters, planting strips, et cetera, to really activate and enclose, as Jeff said, the, the street and pedestrian path to make it a very rich environment, not just a sidewalk that we have today with a face of a building or a chain-link fence. So we'll leave it on that, try to make it short. If you want to reference anything in the application to put up there, we have that after this, and we can go to that image for you, to bring it up large.
We're going to go to questions, so...
Okay.
And maybe some of those.
I have a question. Just questions.
Yeah, right. So does commission have any questions for the applicant?
Could you tell us what you would like to use for, what's being proposed for exterior glass, and take us through that and why in those particular places? Good luck.
Yeah, we'll make this short, because I know you, we're not, this is not the work session, but as Jeff had described, the areas that are the larger, this includes the lobby too, would be 70% or 68%, remember that range we were talking about, as well as the retail on the corner, which are the larger glass areas that Jeff had mentioned. In the windows of the units above, Jeff covered it pretty, pretty effectively, very effectively, in fact. There's a range in the 50s to the low 60s where manufactured glass comes out. The reason for this is this is where we get a lot of our energy efficiency, we're going for EarthCraft on this, and if we had 100%, you know, like, open, we wouldn't be able to cover that. So it's an industry standard, we can't go in and dictate to them what class it is, so that's the range that we run from the 50s into low 60s. And what we've been looking at here is in a range of around 56 for our windows, it could vary slightly. But that's, that's why, that's, Jeff explained it pretty clearly, and that's what we're proposing for the residential portions.
And is that everything above the first floor?
Well, there are some residential units on the first floor that will have windows. Those would be in the manufactured windows. The lobby and the retail, the areas where you want great visibility in to see that activity, et cetera, especially in the lobby in that area, because you got the lobby from the office building across, those will be the storefront-type glass, the 70s, so the visibility is, is high. You want to activate those corners, so those are the areas that would have that. Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes.
Can we see that board?
Sure can.
It's pretty heavy.
Can you guys flip to the lobby slide, that view?
Yeah.
That's the northeast corner, right?
Yes. Next one. There we go. So this is the one that you can see with the little red arrow, that's from the internal, and that's an example.
It's hard to sell with the board.
Right. Mr. Leandro said, it's like, really, it's important to go out and actually look at all these samples when you're, if you have any concern about samples in the future, but especially glass in the light outside. You know, at least we have some incandescence, so that helps here, but a lot of times, if you look at it in, in fluorescent light, it looks pretty bad. But these are, these are rich, we've spent a lot of time looking at the range of here, these are actually quite nice in the sun. We didn't want it to be just a bland building.
How about when it's cloudy? No, I'm just kidding.
So I have a question about livability, I'm, maybe I missed, missed it in the write-up, but pets on this outdoor space is a growing concern in the city. Is there any comment that you all might have about the potential... Is there any comment that you all might have about the potential?
I think that the plan would be to allow up to one pet probably per unit. There's usually a fee associated with that that helps maintain the building. We have, there's a lot of open space in the courtyards.
That's what I was asked, really getting at.
The building will be paying to maintain those spaces. There's also a plan for a pet washing facility in the garage to deal with the.
Okay, so the plan for pet residue is in the courtyards, not on the sidewalk?
Yes, definitely not on the sidewalk, which is illegal in the city, but I understand the.
I know it's illegal.
Dogs don't eat.
That's right. Okay, that's the only thing I noticed. I said, ooh, that's, so the courtyard is the answer.
This is not a public hearing, so there wouldn't be any public comment, but we do have specific guidelines that we have to adhere to and questions that we, then the motions are on page eight of this packet. So is there anything referring to corridor vision, preserve history, I guess with the Cal, facilitating pedestrian access, things that our ERB guidelines address? Building materials, landscaping?
There is a narrative on one of the early sheets, which is right after, I think it's the first sheet, that tries to encapsulate the voluminous pages of which I've been through so many times, I can't give you the pages, but the idea of the connectivity, the material, all those, if you go to the page, it has a little picture of the Dairy and then it has, in our submission, actually, I'll take you to it right here.
That's a good idea.
And it tries to encapsulate all those so you don't have to go page by page. So it's that section right there if you zoom that in. But it talks about the permeability of the site, the circulation, the activation along 10th Street. It talks about the colors and materials, the breaking down of the wall, so you don't have a continuous wall along West Street across from the residential. Again, you know, we have 40% of that is opened on property line to property line. Again, the visible step down and putting the mass in the center of the site away from the residential, residential properties on West so they're not dealing with a strict wall, et cetera like that. We went through every one of the documents and looked at it. And some of the things like the fast food restaurant stuff didn't, you know, really apply here, things like that. But everything that deals with multifamily and beyond, the streetscape. Again, Water Street has been working with us on the streetscape and as you saw in that particular plan, you know, we have done, I would say that the streets that work played a major role. I know it's not in the guidelines, but guess what? It is part of your desire and the comp plan. So we do have full six-foot wide sidewalks on both West and 10th, which, you know, addresses this being, you know, primary A Street, et cetera, and the planting strips. So this has also played a role because it's on roll, so.
Six-foot planting strips?
No, not six-foot, six-foot walks.
Okay, what about the planting strips?
Planting strip.
Do they comply with streets at work?
On West Street, excuse me, on 10th Street, we have a four-and-a-half-foot wide strip that's continuous to allow for the root systems to work for the trees.
But that's still a small to medium tree. That's not a canopy tree.
Well, I do not want to counter what you're saying because I'm not a landscape architect. I have a third of my library on planning and landscape issues, but I won't do that. However.
Well, I'm not either, but.
Okay, well, I will say.
But I am in a tree commission and we talk about this a lot.
Right. And the trees, the trees are called out on the plan. And I can pull that up here.
Can you just go through, which street are you speaking about now, the four-and-a-half?
10th. 10th Street on the left side.
10th Street. That's the four-and-a-half planting width.
That is correct. If you see it, Madam Chair, it's on the lower right-hand section, street section right there.
Lower right-hand.
Lower right-hand, right there.
There we go.
Right. Now, when we get on to Wood Street, we have lower shrubs and elements like that that you can see on the internal, street planting, et cetera. My recollection was these, these trees have to meet a crown cover and they've, that was, that's what this meets. So they're big and I can't, because I'm not an expert on the trees, I'm not going to, I can't answer that question directly, except that I know that crown cover was required and that's where this was generated. So we have enough trees and the trees are large enough and that they will grow large enough.
It's 52 additional trees, I believe, on the streetscape, which currently has zero, I think.
Thank you.
Unless there's further discussion, I believe I have a motion.
Can I make a comment before you make the motion?
No, go ahead and finish eating. Yes.
Yeah, I'm like passing up over here. My comment is that I know the first phase has already been approved and I do think this is a decent project, but I just want it on public record that for me personally, as someone who is a part of this entrance corridor review, I do not feel like the massing and design of this building is in scale with the rest of the community around it. So I just wanted that to be on the record before we vote.
With this caveat, I would like to make a motion.
Thank you.
I'd like to move for approval, having considered the standards set forth within the city code, including the city entrance corridor design guidelines, I move to find that the proposed design for Phase Two of the Dairy Central project, which is at 946 Grady Avenue, which lies within the Preston Avenue entrance corridor, satisfies the ERB's criteria, is consistent with the guidelines, and is compatible with the goals of this entrance corridor, and that the ERB approves the certificate of appropriateness application as submitted with the following conditions. One, the applicant will provide the, an inventory of all final materials, colors, and light fixtures selected. Two, lamping for exterior lighting to be dimmable and not exceed a color temperature of 3,000 K. Would it be adequate to just reference?
Yes.
What's in the packet? Do I have to read it all?
No, you don't.
You can just, you can just say.
Well, you're going to have to read three, the glass.
Item three, yeah.
As noted in the staff recommendations, noting glass for the residential windows and doors will be no lower than 56 VLT.
And do you mind accepting an amendment that the glass for the lobby, retail, and office areas will be no lower than 70% VLT?
I can accept that.
Can I, can I hang on for a second? Hang on, hang on, and we're going to go back to that. Are you making a motion to approve all staff recommendations one through six?
Yes.
You just, you just stopped there at three? So your recommendation, your motion is to approve with staff recommendations one through six that the glass no lower than 56 VLT, that, that one specifically called out?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Leandro, you're.
So what I'm pointing out is recommendation number three gives options.
Okay.
And so I'm limiting those options to the fact that the residential glass on the exterior wall would be no lower than 56 VLT and for the exterior wall glass in the lobby and retail and office areas would be no lower than 70% VLT.
Can I ask a clarifying question while we consider that amendment? Do you guys have any plans to use lower VLT glass than that and also where in Phase One?
Point of order. Let's get a second before we.
Right. Hang on with the questions. Office, I'm sorry, I was trying to take the, office and the lower.
Retail.
Retail.
Lobby.
And lobby. Office, lower, retail, and lobby, no lower than 70.
70.
Okay. So let me make sure I've got this motion that everybody understands before we move forward. And I, I'm not going to forget you. The recommendation is for approval with the staff recommendations one through six with number three specifically calling out residential windows on the upper floors no lower than 56 VLT. And offices and lower retail and lobby, the glass be no lower than the 70 VLT. And that's your friendly amendment?
Yes.
I'd like to remove the section about offices.
There are no offices, right?
That's my understanding.
Different phase, just in case.
In case offices appear.
And another clarifying is that it's not the upper floor residential, there's residential on the first floor too.
Okay, so.
So it's just residential.
So the glass for residential, I'm sorry, I added that word, that is not part of your motion. The glass for residential windows be no lower than 56 VLT and office space, lower retail and lobby spaces have a glass of no lower than 70 VLT. So your motion. Give me a second. Nobody.
And none of the rest of item three is to be included, so there's not a justification for going lower than 70.
Let me make a recommendation. Can we reel this back in? Make a motion. Is there any reason to call out anything on number three since it says it in there? Or do we need to actually call out the specific thing?
I don't.
Doesn't, doesn't the entire paragraph of three cover what we're trying to say? The glass for residential windows and doors be no lower than 56 VLT? This is lower than the preferred, okay.
Yeah, see, so it gives, and there's asterisks, there's an alternate number two, so.
I got it. I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it.
That's why we have to be clear.
I got it.
So, Madam Chair, there's a technicality with that. We're looking for a VLT of 68?
Well, that's not what's in the staff report.
I believe it is.
That's not what, okay.
The BAR approved portions.
Right, BAR.
That's just Phase One.
Right, but the same glass manufacturers of what Jeff was just talking about apply here. So some produce 68, that is the 70, you know, it's comparable. So we would respectfully ask that, since we had this discussion in BAR quite extensively, that the 68 to 70, which is depending on a manufacturer of the big sheets of glass that Jeff talked about, that we have the flexibility for 68 to 70, which is essentially visibly the same.
So I would like to amend my amendment.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. We need to, let's, wait a minute, wait a minute. We haven't even got a second to the first emotion.
Point of order, could, could the motion die for lack of a second and we try again?
I, I think that would be the best thing to do. And so I, I feel that we're on a verge of a motion for approval, but let's make sure we got this right. Mr. Warner, would you like to clarify your recommendations, please?
First off, in the staff report, page five, I had identified the storefront, street-level glass specified as clear with 70 VLT. So that is in the staff report, so I'm maybe not necessary to state that explicitly, it is even in the drawings. As far as the flexibility of the 68 to 70, I think that makes a lot of sense and, and I understand what Mr. Quill is asking and I would respectfully ask that maybe you consider that in, you know, addition, adding it to the motion. Third thing is that, just again, so that we're very clear and we don't get folks saying, well, gee, you approved 56 on Dairy Central Phase Two, simply that in the motion includes some of the conditions, maybe not necessarily as voluminous as I have here, but some of the circumstances under which this is a unique situation in which the 56 as the lower end is, that flexibility is allowed. And again, the preferred 70, if we can amend that to a range of 68 to 70. And the 68 is on Phase One, the majority of the glass, I think, if not all of the new glass is 68. So my failure to be more clear on that.
All right, Mr. Warner.
Yes, ma'am.
For future reference, if you've got any alternatives, can you put those at the bottom and not in the middle? Because we're going to, we're going to go down this thing and check, 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 check.
I know.
And then if you'd like it to state what you'd like it to state, be clear, because we're going to probably say as noted.
Gotcha. Yeah, it was the glass I addressed in the texture materials and color.
I know, but when your recommendations, that's what I want to see it.
Yeah.
Right? Just give us a bullet, save us the words. Ms. Robertson, can we go to 68 since it wasn't advertised?
Yeah.
Okay. Fantastic.
Yeah, this didn't record.
So if I were going to make a motion right now that sounded something like approval with the recommendations one, two, four, five, and six being as staff recommended approval, would that sound right? And then you all can, and then we would have a residential windows of 56 and because, and then you'd have to make a statement about why and then.
The statement could potentially be there.
I might recommend we take three as is and then add a new recommendation for the 68. That way it doesn't get tied into the reasoning for three.
Or I can just make a motion.
You got it? You going to do it? First, the first motion died. Let's try this again. Take two.
All right. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion. I move that, having considered the standards set forth within the city code, including the city entrance corridor design guidelines, I move to find that the proposed design for Phase Two of the Dairy Central Project, 946 Grady Avenue, which lies within the Preston Avenue entrance corridor, satisfies the ERB's criteria, is consistent with the guidelines and is compatible with the goals of this entrance corridor, and that the ERB approves the certificate appropriateness application as submitted with the following conditions, specifically conditions one, two, three, no, one, two, four, five, six, as staff recommended. And then this condition three, the glass for the residential windows and doors will be no lower than 56 VRT, VLT because of the punched windows and the higher elevations for the residential and because they're residential windows, and that the glass for the lobby, retail, and office areas be no lower than 68% VLT.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Now, if anybody else wants to comment or have anything about that, now is the time to do that. Yes, no? Seeing that there's none, Mr. Krissy, we call it roll.
Mr. Leandro?
Aye.
Mr. Soli Yates?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Stolinsberg?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
And Ms. Green?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
So I am going to gavel us out of entrance corridor and back into the planning commission for our last, thank you, thank you for your patience, for the commission action items on the comprehensive plan. So what this particular discussion right now, before we adjourn till Saturday, will be is kind of the layout that we're going to see on Saturday morning, starting at 11:00 a.m. So we have several things that we need to continue and we are not leaving Saturday until we discuss that land use map. Got it? Are we good on that? So like, Missy, would you like us to lay it out, 11 to 12, we do this, 12 to 1, we do this, 1 to 2, we do this?
I just want you all to consciously lay out what you're planning to do so, so we're ready to roll. There's, material-wise, you all have a lot still with the packet from the November 6th meeting. We received some materials from place and preservation Piedmont. We've got the land use map, the narrative, community engagement chapter. So there, there are a lot of pieces of this puzzle.
So what if I just laid out something for you right now? Tell me what you think. Is it possible between 11 and 12 to finish up this November 6th packet that we were discussing on transportation, housing, environment, economic? Because we only had a few comments left.
No, no, you got through four pages of 14.
No, that's part of land use. I wasn't talking about land use yet.
No, 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 no. This is the, these are, what's in here are the chapters that you all looked at at the October 30th with the updates. So this is transportation, housing, environment, economic, facilities. So this is transportation, housing, environment, economic, facilities, and presentation.
So from eleven to one, we finished the November sixth packet?
The November sixth packet?
Where are we at in the November? We got to page four. November sixth, eleven to one.
Well, okay, so there was the memo.
Yeah, we were discussing the memo.
And you all got through page four of the memo.
We're not gonna, and we're not gonna go down a rabbit hole of.
The memo is fourteen pages.
I'm gonna be a taskmaster on this.
And that, so that was just the chapters, not land use portions.
Right.
Yeah.
So eleven to one, we finish, and y'all already have this packet, right? And you've already read it, that's the most important thing between now and Saturday, is get this read. So we don't reread it to each other, right? Yeah. And then eleven, no, and then one to two, we are going to finish, and we are almost finished. Mr. Affley, please tell me I'm right, our land use narrative key.
There were a couple outstanding things mentioned in the November sixth eight packet.
Yep, yeah, so we had a few things left on this key thing right here.
What is that?
This is the narrative for the land use.
Gotcha.
So we could potentially get through that between eleven and one.
You mean one and two?
One and two.
No, I mean, that's part of that November sixth packet.
I, that would be very ambitious.
So let's go, November sixth packet minus the land use narrative, eleven to one, one to two, the land use narrative, and then the remainder of the time, the land use map. I see not a positive smiling faces.
Oh, community, public community engagement empowerment, chapter.
I guess we're gonna have to do that on the twentieth. I don't know how we're gonna get all this done in four hours, five hours. If we have time at the end, we can do that. We are still here on the twentieth. Do you got, can you guys get through the land use map in an hour? Be realistic, can we get through the land use map in an hour?
No.
Then, I don't want us to set people up to come to think we're gonna have that conversation and it not happen. So I want us to be realistic. Knowing that this packet, do y'all still have this packet? The sixth? Remembering what's in it, can we get that done between eleven and one?
Are we gonna go through every little section? Haven't we already did some of this?
We have, but this is more comments.
The comments that were provided by the commission following the October twenty-third work session. And so what this memo has is it outlines what the current text is in the draft. It outlines the comment that was provided by the commissioner, and then it outlines any staff comments. And so it is potential, if everyone goes through that in advance and looks through those three options and determines, or puts some notes down, that the discussion could go more quickly.
I was about to say that.
Most of the packet in the back here is just the update of the editing comments.
So what happened in the last meeting is we literally read each one and went back and forth.
Well, you all talked about transportation for an hour and a half. So that's where.
We, there was some.
Just a little bit of a hiccup.
So let's not bring guest speakers back on that, we'll just.
I mean, and not that that's a bad thing, it's just that that's what occurred.
We still need to have that conversation. But, so is it possible that y'all can read those, have your notes, and be ready?
That's possible.
Have your talking points. So by Saturday, when we open this up, everybody's gonna have their talking points, so we're gonna glaze through this. Because it's potential that we could get through this between eleven and twelve. We have that potential.
As long as we don't go down these rabbit holes.
All right.
So, and the staff, the staff has already put in the wording that we did in our last meeting, right?
Yeah.
The wording from the twenty-third of October.
Is now, is now in there.
Yeah.
I see twenty-seven sections that we didn't get to last week.
Twenty-seven sections.
Twenty-seven. Blue things here. Some aren't super controversial, though.
But if we all have read those, and I'm not, we're not reading them, proposed text. So get your wordsmithing down, right? And then all we have to argue over is that wordsmithing. Got it?
Okay. Can we just agree to have?
Can we agree to do that? Everybody, yes. So eleven to twelve, November sixth packet, I'm gonna make this, twelve to one, land use narrative. One to three, now obviously we're gonna take a few breaks here and there, but probably not many. One to three, map. And the remainder of the time, three to four, what we get through there.
We're gonna need some coffee.
We're gonna need some coffee.
And breakfast.
So this is my other problem, eleven AM?
Bus call brunch.
Eleven AM, so my other question is, we have, we have the community engagement. I'm gonna loosely term that as chapter. Bullet points. Right?
Well, I mean, you all are gonna wanna talk about what to do with that.
Okay.
You know, the representatives from Place are recommending putting in a placeholder, and then over a period of time, developing it further. So that may be something that you want to consider.
And it is important to note that this is a, this is something, a document, it's a living, breathing document. In all honesty, if things aren't working, we should maybe go back and look at it before five years and make the changes we need to, and not sit this thing on there and let it be stale.
Now, there's also the consideration of the land use chapter itself. That's something that the commission has not talked about, and mainly because you have to work through the narrative and the map to make sure that your goals are gonna make sense there, so.
I'm gonna recommend to you all that between one and four is land use. Whether that is the land use narrative, the land use map, and this land use chapter. I just don't see how we're gonna have time to talk about community engagement information on Saturday. And I would hate to have that advertised and have people go, I gotta be there, and then be disappointed. But I think we have to make this commitment for land use. I mean, it's like something we don't wanna bite off, or everybody's afraid to touch. But I think once we get in there, we get this done, and we take a look at it, and council's gonna say we like it, or we don't, go back again. It's like putting that paper in, and we gotta put it in the first draft.
Question.
Yes.
So I hear that we're talking about land use vote and like the land use narrative and map. But from the map, what exactly do you want from us? To be prepared?
So, to be prepared, we've all got the map. I think based off of the conversation, I think review back, review your, the chart.
This is not the right one.
No, it's not the right one. Review this, this.
So in that, in that packet from the sixth, we have a copy of.
Of the narrative.
The narrative, we have a clean copy of the narrative, and then we have a copy of the narrative that shows the changes that you all made, so that you have that context.
And there was a lot of great discussion in there, where there were some good changes made. Review those changes for that land use that we talked about. So everybody see this, so I want you to make sure you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
See how it's, see how it's got red lines and blue lines here for you playing at home? Red lines, blue lines, see that?
And so this is still very rough language capturing the ideas. We have not, another task will be trying to make the flow of that a little bit nicer.
So that's a great staff.
Getting, getting the ideas is crucial at this point.
So one of the things to think about as we think about this, because, and I would suggest you all have a packet with that kind of missing middle as you look at that and think about that. And then we had some really good information, I think, from the twenty-third of October, looking at some narratives from other localities. And I think having that, I would suggest reading that, because it had some really good information. Again, not trying to create DC or anything else, but it had some really good information about different types of housing, and different intensities and densities and heights for urban areas.
That, that's probably where you all are gonna spend a lot of time, is establishing a range of density for each of these categories.
So while we got that in the twenty-third of October, and we skimmed it, I don't think we read it. And I think now if we go back and read that, it's gonna resonate more, because we've kinda been through this once.
So on that note, I know we really like the pictures in, for example, DC's map. Is there any way we could go into this with a big set of pictures of various types of density at different levels and types of housing?
We have a, we have a poster board in the closet that we use pretty frequently to show, this is what this looks like, this is what that looks like. So we're gonna just bring that up.
We kinda did, but if you've got something that you're looking at, and you're like, okay, this seems, like, with setbacks and modulations and street, how this relates to the street, I suggest you look at that. And if you've got something that you're just like, yeah, this is what I see, bring it. I think it opens up good discussion points. But I think now, reading back through that stuff that we got in October, because then, without having this conversation, I think it will, I think you'll read it differently now from the October twenty-third meeting. Do we need that resented, everybody, does everybody know what I'm talking about? Yes. Will you please resend that out? Fantastic. I just wanna make sure your email box tings one time tomorrow, okay? I just don't see how we're gonna get with the community engagement based off of what we have left to do.
All right, so.
And that's the twentieth.
So while we're talking through, I've got to advertise for the twentieth also. So continuation of this, I can put that on there as, and where you guys land on the twentieth is.
What happens on the seventeenth, what we bring back on the twentieth should be just, I thought about this, I think we need to change the word and, but, I mean, honestly, we've gotta get to that. Right? But then the twentieth should be the community engagement discussion with the, that includes the place memo and the Piedmont environment, Piedmont.
So Piedmont environment, or Preservation Piedmont did a draft of the, took the twenty thirteen land use chapter and made comments on it.
Okay, we can bring that on Saturday. So read that as well. Maybe it sparks some ideas. I'm not sure what community engagement there was from that, other than Piedmont, but, you know, it's part of the community engagement.
Could you send that out again?
And it's, while some of you've been involved in the community engagement, we have talked to a lot of people. It's important to remember the conversations we've had with the people that we've talked to, and the people have come forth and said.
And so it would be on the twentieth that the community people would come? Not, that's what you're saying?
People could come Saturday, too.
I mean, whoever comes, wants to come Saturday.
It's all advertised.
I'm sure we've got people that will be there Saturday. But then also, but, but what I would say is, if you are there for just the community engagement chapter, you would probably not waste your time sitting and listening to the land use chapter on Saturday. But. But for that particular section, Tuesday, the twentieth, is that day for you. I would also suggest, I know it's the day before Thanksgiving Eve, that depending on what happens, it might be eight o'clock before we get out of here.
Make sure you tell the kids that, because they have a sleepover.
I don't wanna be here till eight o'clock either, but we gotta get this done. This is it, folks, and then I'm not gonna see you again until December.
What? Can you, like, make a Facebook?
I'll, I'll send you, I'll have all you a picture, or I can send you a private message that says, read this. Are we good? Any questions, comments, concerns?
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It is very aggressive.
We have a lot to get through. And unfortunately for you four new guys.
Oh, Matt remembered something else that we.
I don't know, I don't wanna hear that. You're basically doing a comp plan in about six weeks. Sorry.
Not to add to the homework, but there, one thing I'd like y'all to keep in mind, doing all the homework you gave them, Lisa, because there was something I was hoping to do, and we just don't have time. And that was to kinda do, to see where some of the holes, to do a mock rezoning with this new kind of map, because this is very different for staff, too. And so kinda with the conversation we just had tonight with the rezoning of Carlton, if y'all could kinda take this information, you know, in your spare time, and think about those standards of review, and just see how that plays out with this.
How would we do that without a zoning ordinance?
So, that's what you're gonna run in?
We have now for a period of time, so we need to keep that in mind.
The honesty of it is, for, I foresee for a while, coming before this body with rezonings that are on the new comp plan map, but the current zoning regulations. And so we as staff have to make that work, to be able to give you all the information you can and make recommendations. Just a thought, as you're looking at this, how is that going to work?
Is that something that can happen after the council's had a whack at it?
I think that's a good idea. I think that's a better idea for the gist, for the simple fact that I don't want us to make a comprehensive plan based off of being afraid of what's coming to us for a rezoning or something like that. We need to make the comprehensive plan based off of what the comprehensive plan should be.
I agree a hundred percent, I think that's a brilliant process.
And then we need to think about what we're gonna do, and how this will look with things coming for us. But we could possibly do that in December. Y'all are gonna, y'all are gonna miss each other, and we're gonna wanna get back together.
Well, we also are gonna have to think through, in all of this time period, what kind of questions that we would want to ask council concerning this as part of the report. So we'll be providing, you'll be providing council with, here is our draft. If there are questions that we want council to answer based on that, or if we have questions that we are posing to them based on that, we've got to be able to keep those things in mind as well.
Well, should that, I mean, I don't know how the process works. We're gonna be in a room around a table with the council, or is it in here?
Um, no, it would be in here.
His idea about doing a mock presentation is a great idea.
Well, it won't be that much.
That is a very.
I just want you to have a picture in my head of how, what we're actually getting ready to do. I guess I was thinking, it's paper, we just throw it at the council and they can read it.
I think it's a document, don't, no. What is the plan?
Yeah.
We've been told.
What are we getting ready for?
We have been told to give a draft to council in December. So wherever you all are.
A written draft.
Yeah.
So we don't really have to present it to them, we just give it to them.
Yeah.
No, but you might wanna, but you wanna consider what, you're giving them a draft, what, what are you wanting from them? Do you want them to just adopt it? Do you want them to review it, provide feedback? Do you want?
Here, put this on record. What I want from them is for, once we get this finalized and we go through this process, that it is actually followed.
Okay, well, our control of that is not, we need to focus on the things we have control of.
Yes, we do want feedback.
So that's my question, is it an interactive moment, or do we just give them a piece of paper?
At that point, it's an, it's not an interactive moment. They're asking for something to be on that council.
We will provide them a package.
That makes it easier in my mind.
We, meaning a commission. Oh, no, 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 they will need to, in fact, these things actually go much smoother in presenting to council if it's the body that has created the materials. We will be there to help support, but it would be ideal to have a commissioner saying, this is the tool, this is what we're presenting to.
That's a very different picture in my head of what we're trying to prepare for.
Well, so, so a couple things, this is not the first go or whack at it that they've seen.
And, and since there have been no hearings, I mean, there have been, there's been engagement throughout the process, but this is not scheduled for a hearing at. At, if, if they like everything, at a minimum, we would be scheduling it for hearings and beginning that process.
So let me ask this question. If we are providing this to them by December, and we finalize what we're finalizing on the twentieth, you guys type it all up nice and neat and do your presentation packet. When is your expectation or anticipation that you will have it to them to start reading it?
Beginning of December.
What's the seventeenth?
The meetings of seventeen.
Because they're gonna need more than a week to read through this.
Oh, yeah, it'll be more than that, yeah.
So...
The beginning of December is, is the plan, because then... Yeah.
Because...
The twentieth of Thanksgiving.
My, my mind is, is that we would, if, if you want a planning commissioner, I am fine, I will stand up here, I don't, I don't care, I can do that. And I think it would be, in my mind, it's more about questions and answers. They probably are gonna have questions. And so I think it's just gonna be a, kind of a, this is where we are at this point, this is where we, we, we got to, talking to them more about the, the, not being a corridor-based, but more of a node place, whatever word we wanna come up with on that. And then we realize we had to connect those. There's still some corridor connectivity between those places, and providing complete places with amenities and transportation.
I have a really good working document that catalogs all these steps up to this point, so I mean, it's...
And most of them have been in one of these presentations where we presented that. So, I think it's no different than the presentation, I think it's just what it's looking like.
I think we had a great example tonight with the High Street presentation. You lay it out, what we've been through. You lay out how much engagement we've had, you lay out how, how long it's taken, what we've done at the different steps. Then you, you lay out the, the principles behind the comprehensive plan that we started with, and that we have, present you here.
And, and we've got most of that, that slideshow presentation.
Yeah, yeah, it's sort of, we've given it before, we just sort of updated it.
We'll repackage the pieces of the puzzle we already have, and we'll have you guys take a look at that, and then, yeah. So that, that piece, we, we need the substance. That, that piece we can handle.
And then just be there to answer questions. I think, just like us, if you think about this, think about the first time that we all said to you, hey, this is what we did. And then the second time, we came back and said, and, and this is why, and this is why. It's a lot of digestion of material. I'm not so sure that they're not gonna, if I were on council, I would say, hey, let's, let's sit down to an hour real work session with, with the planning commission. I know meeting times are a lot more complicated, but that's what I would do, to be able to absorb all of this. And you and I both know they're not gonna read all of it. There's some, because some counselors have done read through all of this.
You don't think they're keeping up with it as we're going along?
I think there's a couple. But I think there's at least a couple that are, no idea. I'm not trying to be mean, I'm just...
I think there's one that's keeping up.
One?
I was being generous. I think there's a couple. I think there's a couple that have definitely been keeping up with the hype and the vocal, but as far as the meat and potatoes, I'm not sure. That's no slide against council, you got a lot going on, but...
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, I can.
I accept that motion, and I'll see you on Saturday.
Thank you.